I'm going to call this Celine City Council work meeting to order at 6:00 PM on Monday, July the 6th. Thank you for joining us. This is a hybrid meeting tonight for both our work meeting and regular meeting, so please bear with us. Clerk Royal, are you with us this evening?
I am.
Oh, excellent. Okay. Well, I'll take role then. Present currently are myself, Mayor Marl, Mayor Protem Girba, Councilmember CO, Mitchell, Dylan, and Kamara Sulak. From city staff, we have Clerk Royal. Wastewater Treatment Superintendent Wigowski, are you with us? He is not currently here. Assistant City Manager Green, are you present?
Yes, sir.
Very good. And in the audience, we also have our consultant, Brian Rubel from Tetra Tech. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the work meeting agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
So moved?
Moved by Mayor Protem as submitted, sir?
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Seceded by Councilmember CO. All those in favor of approving the agenda as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion is approved unanimously. The record will reflect that Councilmember Del Orco is entering the room now, so there are no absences, so we'll proceed to public comments. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. I'll note for the public's benefit that there are no citizens present in council chambers this evening, so I would defer to City Clerk Royal. Did we receive any written communications in advance of tonight's meeting?
No, we did not.
Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong, Clerk Royal, but if a citizen or interested party wanted to type in a question or comment, they could do so at the bottom of the screen under the comment icon.
Correct.
Okay. We'll give folks just a few minutes. If you do have questions or concerns, reference the siting study and the future of wastewater services in the Celine community. Again, I would ask the clerk, are there any comments that have been typed in or submitted in the last 30 seconds or so?
There has nine.
Okay. One last call. Okay, the record will reflect that there are no citizen comments, so we proceed to the one and only discussion item, which is the wastewater treatment siting study. Let me begin. Acting City Manager Green, is there anything that you would like to add this evening before we open it up for discussion?
No, sir. As you know, in the audience, we do have Brian Rubel here to answer any questions. We also have Roger Swetts on the call to answer any questions you may have.
Oh, very good. Okay. Well, let me start with Mr. Brian Rubel. Mr. Rubel, do you have any comments that you'd like to share at this time?
Just maybe a minute?
Yep, please, if you'd like to go to the podium. And Brian, I believe, and our IT director can correct me if I'm wrong, that microphone is not working, is it?
It's trying.
Okay.
We're all set?
Yep.
Okay.
Just try to speak loudly and clearly.
Well, very good. I think I just wanted to talk about tonight, I think, is maybe the end of a few months of discussion on the siting study. And just as a reminder, you know, it was a conceptual study to look at the pros and cons of various options. And the council was very patient, patiently waiting with many, many questions about what this plant will look like, and I appreciate that patience. There will be many other steps to follow where all those things will be flushed out, so thank you for your patience. Just one, a couple items that I wanted to chat about, just give you some insight here, maybe moving forward. Your site is unique, in my experience of going to several dozen wastewater plants, and it's unique in the fact that you have residents very close to the treatment processes. So there wasn't a lot of discussion about that and the impact on neighbors. Doesn't, I'm not trying to imply the wastewater plant is a poor neighbor, but it's nobody's favorite neighbor.
Right.
So I just, I certainly hope as you go along the process that you keep that in mind, that that will always be perhaps frustrating to some. And we've talked along the way about acquiring parcels, maybe buffering other parcels around the plant, which would buffer that, and/or maybe we'll talk tonight, too, about locating certain processes on a new piece of parcel, and I think all those are excellent ideas. The only other item I wanted to chat about is along the way, I, we started the siting study with a very clear mission from the proposal process to look at annexation and the city's ultimate planning area. And I did hear a few times along the way that certain members might not agree with that plan as part of the city's future, and that's going to be a pretty important consideration for what the plant will look like. So that might be something worthy of a discussion as you proceed, so that when you get to the design, you kind of have that worked out, what is the consensus for what this plant should be designed for? That I think could only help the situation down the road. And I believe, just wanted, that's all I had to say, but I think Patty McCall, again from my office, professional geologist, is on the Zoom call tonight in case you have questions for her about the environmental assessment process.
Very good. Thank you. And Patty, we welcome you here this evening. Attorney Swetts, is there anything that you would like to add at this time?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say, you know, my main role here is to address, you know, some of the financial projections that we've provided. You know, my sense is that we're kind of past that point, so I don't want to, I don't want to spend any time on that, but I'm happy to answer any questions people have. And Warren Kramer, I'm not sure he's on the call now, but he may be joining the call if there are questions in that regard. My partner Sharon Nuland is with us, and I know Sharon had shared some thoughts with a couple of the members that are on the Eagle Working Group with respect to her knowledge through reviewing public records on the 233 Monroe site, which is the site across the street from the current plant, which would be the option 1B option. And, you know, my sense is that if folks are comfortable with the phasing options that the financial data kind of pointed towards, then one of the next key decision points is, you know, option 1A, which is a new plant on the current site, or option 1B, which is to incorporate that other site for some of the operations. And concerns have been raised earlier about the environmental status of that site, and Sharon has reviewed the EPA's Envirofax database and certain other, I think some, maybe a lawsuit or other public documents that there are about that site. And that being listed on that site, which identifies it as subject to something called corrective action under the hazardous waste program, makes that site different than other contaminated sites. And I'll let Sharon share some of those thoughts with you, but I really wanted her to be available to answer questions, because I think she can talk very intelligently about what that means for the site, and I sense that that's kind of a key, kind of a key, a key area of concern and interest for the council. So with that, I will be happy to address any questions, but also, if you would like, we could hear from Sharon on those issues.
Yes, I think that would be great, Attorney Swetts. Sharon, are you with us?
I am.
Very good. Yes, we can hear you perfectly. Would you like to elaborate on the points that Mr. Swetts made?
Yes. So I had some knowledge of this site before because of a case that arose out of it that was of particular interest. And so it occurred to me that it might be subject to corrective action. That is the cleanup program under our state hazardous waste program and also the federal hazardous waste programs. And so it is a different type of environmental cleanup program and environmental liability than our, than the state's standard Part 201 cleanup liability. And what's important to note with respect to that in this instance is that going through the normal baseline environmental assessment process to obtain exemptions from liability for existing conditions does not impact the corrective action liability, and that is a liability that travels with the land. I expect that if you were to do a title search on this property, you would probably find a recorded document indicating that, as the state had passed a law a few years ago requiring that all corrective action sites have a document recorded to put all new owners on notice that this liability does travel with the land. So any new owner of the property is going to have corrective action liability. The question about, you know, what does that mean to the city depends on where the property is in the corrective action process. If it's received a full cleanup to a no further action status, that would be excellent news. Even at that status, it might have restrictions that travel with the property and obligations for monitoring that, that type of thing. So I would highly recommend that if you are considering pursuing this property, that you do a good thorough review of the state's records to see where the property stands in terms of its environmental remediation activities.
Very good. Thank you, Sharon. Assistant, or excuse me, Acting City Manager Green, to follow up on a conversation that you and I had last week, have you reached out yet to our new contact at Adient, the spinoff of Johnson Controls, reference the status of this parcel?
I have. I got, I reached out to him at the end of last week. I just have yet to hear back from him.
Okay, very good. And so for the public's benefit, it's my duty to report that our previous contact, Mr. Mike Stalton, who made numerous public presentations to this body and the community, is no longer with Adient. So he provided us with a new contact shortly before former city manager Todd Campell departed. Mike and I talked about this, but needless to say, we need to touch base with whomever the decision maker is now at Adient to continue to advocate for a thorough and complete remediation of the site, but also to determine what their plans are long term. So, very good. I apologize if I cut you off, Sharon. Was there anything else that you'd like to add this evening?
No, I'm available for questions, but that was what I had wanted to express.
Very good. I will start with questions from Mayor Protem Girba, work my way toward the end of the dais, so it will be Girba, Dylan, Del Orco, and then I will hop to the three council members, Mitchell, CO, and Kamara Sulak, who are participating remotely. I would remind my colleagues, as a follow-up to our last work meeting and an email I sent last week, I am looking, I am hoping to get consensus on this issue by the end of tonight's meeting, and what I believe the consensus will be, maybe not, but is for us to grow and expand in place and perhaps begin the process of due diligence and evaluate the former Universal diecast Hooverball bearing site. I'll start with questions, but if you also care to make comments or offer your opinion, that would be fine. Mayor Protem Girba, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Nuland, my question has to do with, I think, and you had mentioned this previously because we were talking about it, the difference between the property and digging underneath it and the potential of building on top of it versus, you know, like air rights or that situation. Could you explain that a little bit in terms of what we possibly could do with the land if it didn't involve digging down into it?
Right. And I believe this discussion arose out of a case that had been, that I had referenced earlier about this property, and an owner, an interim owner, had disturbed some materials, some slabs that had been left in place intentionally to cap known contamination. And because they had disturbed those, they were actually found to be partially responsible for the contamination at the site because their disturbance of these caps released or made the contamination more available to water, to the rain and precipitation and people, frankly. So one of the concerns is that if they have capping mechanisms here at the property, and that's part of the overall remediation, that there wouldn't be an ability to just, to go below the surface with any kind of development without putting in place some specific protections and potentially having to address and dispose of it hazardous waste site soils that might be excavated in conjunction with that work.
And again, if we are the ones that tap into that or break it, whatever, we're ultimately responsible for cleaning it up as a result, correct? Because now we're the property owner, or the city would be the property owner of it?
The city would be the property owner, so yes, if it disturbed the existing remediation, then it would be responsible for increased costs of addressing those contaminants.
One other question, it's a little sideways. We look at our current location of our plant, and as we talk about us expanding it within the footprint of where it currently exists, what potential hazard do we possibly incur as a result of us digging up around there? We're not exactly sure what's in that location either. At one time, there was a city dump and so forth. So would we be subject to some kind of environmental assessment on our current site that we own?
I would recommend that if you had concerns about whether disturbing the soils might disturb contamination, that you would do a pre-construction survey, environmental survey of the areas where you're planning to develop. I think that would be a prudent move.
Okay. Thank you. That's it for me.
Okay. Councilwoman Dylan, any questions?
Thank you. Just very quickly, I'll start with Mr. Rubel. Is there sufficient current footprint at the plant to expand it to the capacity at which we're talking?
There is, but again, the caveat is you're getting closer to residents.
Right. Okay. And then I just wanted to piggyback, I guess, on what Mr. Girba said, which was doing environmental assessments. I would assume Phase 1s would be done for both pieces of property. I almost feel like we have to do that before we rule out moving to another location.
Yep. I remember that question came up last time, and Patty, her comment she's on is that you could do that. If you, if you want to really understand that risk, then absolutely you can do that.
Right. And then I, my other question is, I'm not sure who it would be for, maybe for Mr. Green or for the mayor, which is about REUs and where we stand. We sort of moved away from the UDA, and I guess I want to know sort of, based on what Mr. Rubel was just saying, are we still going to pursue that at some point? We keep talking in this vacuum of Andalina, but I mean, obviously, the land that we were discussing was much more vast. And so I guess I would want to make sure that that's something that is still viable with the township, and I know there was some discussions previously, but so that we were making this decision, this expansion decision, based on actual, you know, numbers, not just the idea that we may develop.
Yeah. I think that's an excellent question. And as you'll recall, and I'm saying this primarily for the community's benefit, but pre-COVID, we had our first meeting of an annexation working committee, which, as you know, consisted of myself, yourself, Mayor Protem Girba, and Bill Beardsley from the Planning Commission, and then four representatives from Celine Township to begin to develop the framework for a broad, comprehensive annexation agreement, which may apply to nearly one-third or one-fourth of Celine Township. So we need to revisit that issue and in the ensuing months and weeks, call additional meetings, but that's certainly something we will, we will continue to pursue. I should have prefaced, however, Councilwoman, that I think as you likely concluded from that initial meeting, it will take some time to develop that framework and present something tangible for both governing boards, the City of Celine and Celine Township, to consider.
Thank you. I'm all set.
Councilmember Del Orco, any questions?
I'm so sorry, Your Honor. I am unable to hear Mr. Rubel. I couldn't hear the last two answers he gave. Is it possible to give him a mic, please?
He was at the mic, I believe. Do you want to?
I'm going to try one more with the dais, maybe next one, a little bit. Or just join us at the dais?
Yeah. Why don't you do that, Brian? Just make sure the green light is illuminated at the base.
Thank you. I'm so sorry to interrupt.
Do you want to reiterate the point that you made to Councilwoman Dylan's question?
And if I, if I understood the question, and I, my memory is correct, it was, could we do a Phase 1 at the current wastewater treatment plant site to better understand the risk of that parcel? And, okay, let me start again. So the question was, could we do a Phase 1 environmental assessment at the existing wastewater treatment plant site to better understand the characteristics of building there? And Patty McCall did answer that last time. You absolutely could if you see value in doing that.
If I may, my understanding, and Councilwoman Dylan, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought her line of question was actually a little bit broader than that. I thought she was inquiring about a Phase 1 environmental, not only for the existing facility parcel, but also for the two parcels that formerly housed Universal diecast Hooverball bearing.
Correct.
Okay. And I, I know the answer is yes. We can and should do an environmental assessment, at least an initial one, on all three parcels. Very good. Councilmember Del Orco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think my question is for Ms. Newton. Are we able to determine the financial liability impact ahead of moving forward with the purchase of that land? I just want to make sure I understand the answer to that, because it sounds like if the liability of the environmental impact falls on the city once we acquire ownership, then we would need to perform due diligence to investigate what kind of situation we're looking at there as far as the cleanup goes.
Yeah. So I, as part of the due diligence, I would expect that you would want to get the records from the state to see how far and of what nature the remediation activities have taken place on site, to see if it is at a state where there's no further action kind of determination or it's close enough to that that you can get comfortable with it. I think also, as has been suggested, the use of the property and what you could potentially put on there, and whether or not you would want to excavate, those are considerations that would also have to be taken into account with regard to, you know, future plans for site development and the potential for that to increase your costs of development.
And then, if I could just add to that, I think a practical concern that the council needs to be aware of is, you know, Sharon's referred to the no further action determination. This is not like where you have a baseline and then that insulates the city from liability. So this is, this is a more trickier situation. If the no further action determination is given, you've got some assurance that the regulators think they're done. Now, that's different than the, than the protection you get from, from doing a Phase 1 and a Phase 2. Now, one practical consideration that you need to worry about is if this site is years away from being even to the no further action determination, I don't want to speak for Sharon, but I'm going to think, I'm pretty sure she's going to tell you that if you're not going to be able to get to no further action by the time you need the property, then her recommendation would be not to, not to, not to consider it. So that's one of the big things to figure out in the Phase 1, in looking at the documents from the state, is to see if that's even a realistic timeframe. And then, Councilmember Del Orco asked a very good question. If you even get to that no further action, are you comfortable? So I just wanted to point out there's a practical aspect as well as the scientific aspect.
Okay, thank you. I guess the first step, then, is a title search before the Phase 1 and Phase 2 to get at that, to get the answer?
I don't, I would say, I, I wouldn't say that that's necessary to do that. I think that the records from the state will be more helpful to you in this regard. The title search would just confirm whether or not that restriction was placed on the property, but we do have confirmation from governmental records already that that property is considered subject to corrective action.
Okay.
I would, I would just add, I think a big part of the Phase 1 in this case, and sometimes it's hard to get documents from the state, so sometimes in a Phase 1, you maybe would skip over that a little bit to the extent that they're not, they're not forthcoming or available, but in this case, getting a full and complete record of state documents is a critical part of the Phase 1 and needs to be clearly understood in the engagement. And I'm sure that, I'm sure that Brian and Patty fully understand that, but just, you understand that really getting all that documentation is critical in this particular case.
Understood. Yeah. Okay. Then I guess my next question is for Mr. Rubel. In the event that this property turns out to be cost prohibitive, as Ms. Dylan suggested earlier, we might look into options of growing the capacity on the current footprint, and the limitations there are that we run the risk of moving closer to the neighbors. We had mentioned earlier about the park space just to the west of the plant that currently exists, that's kind of an open field, that's not really mowed all that much, and the 237 Monroe Street property, are those options that exist for us in the event that the Universal diecast proves not viable?
I think it would be to your benefit to have more space, whether you build on it or it's strictly a buffer, either way, I think it's, it's going to be a benefit to you.
Okay. All right. Nothing further. Thanks.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Del Orco. We'll transition now to those who are participating remotely. We'll begin with Councilwoman Mitchell, and then move to CO and Kamara Sulak.
Your Honor, thank you, folks, who have asked questions already. I'm so sorry, I did not catch the name of our environmental expert that has been speaking.
Sharon, do you want to introduce yourself again with your first and last name, title, and a little bit of background?
Yes. It's, I just need a name, that's all.
Oh, it's Sharon Nuland, that's N-E-W-L-O-N.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Nuland. I'm so sorry I had to ask to repeat that, but I want to make sure I, I know who I'm talking to and I can address you properly.
Not a problem.
I think a lot of people before me raised good issues. What is the cost of an environmental study? Do we know that, or does it depend on different factors?
So a Phase 1 environmental assessment generally runs in the range of $2,500 to $3,500, depending on the property. And that is, and also in this case, because there's, we anticipate there may be significant documentation review, that it might go a little bit toward the higher side of that. So that is the step, the Phase 1, is where you would see what historic records there are here, which I think is a critical part of this study, of the adjacent property particularly, but also potentially of the existing property. Beyond that, if you wanted to go the next steps, there are Phase 2 studies that would be, involve actual testing of the properties, and those would, there is a large range of what those might be depending on what the results of the Phase 1 are. Because the purpose of the Phase 1 is to identify environmental question marks, really, and then the Phase 2 is to determine whether those question marks actually indicate an actual problem.
Sure. Well, and I appreciate, Ms. Nuland, that you talked about the previous information because I guess I'm hesitant to use our own resources and how far we go into this because it's probably so exhaustively documented. Can you speak to that a little bit? Would we be reproducing effort?
Certainly, if there's been a good amount of environmental work that's been done, especially in regard to sampling on the adjacent property, then that could be used in lieu of any sampling that we would plan to do, as long as it's determined by the consultants to be sufficiently, cover sufficiently the issues that they've identified at the site. But certainly, yes, relying on the historic sampling data especially may be a good way to save the resources of the city.
And of course, there'd be a cost, rightly so, of reviewing that information. So in lieu of a, of a true Phase 1 study, we'd be putting that money into a paperwork review, essentially. Is that right?
Well, the Phase 1 itself would include the paperwork review, so I would recommend that you probably go ahead with the Phase 1, because it has a couple of different purposes. You know, it does qualify for the first steps in certain defenses that are available at the state and federal level, so I think that you would want to go forward with that since you're going to be doing the paperwork review anyway. I don't think that that's going to add appreciably to the cost of that review.
Okay. I appreciate that. I guess at this point, I am reluctant to do anything with that property, as, you know, starts talking to the rest of the council. My last recollection is that we had a statement from Adient that their last intervention did not work. That was some kind of thing where they had a vacuum system, I had to ask a question about how loud it was for neighbors. And I, I do remember distinctly that that didn't work. So I guess it's kind of a gamble, and I'm just going to repeat the footprint question anyway with, with Mr. Rubel and Mr. Wigowski. When we're talking about new parts to the wastewater treatment plant, Phase 1 is considered adequate to cover our needs now, plus a little bit, is that correct?
Could you repeat the question?
Sure. Sure. I'm sorry, Steve. Are you able to hear me well?
Yeah, you're not coming through real well. I can hear everybody else pretty well, but you're a little low.
Thank you, CEO. Okay, I will speak a little bit louder. As far as Phase 1 of the construction, do we have enough of a footprint for that? And how long would that suit us? Like, didn't I hear that Phase 2 is going to be way in the future if we don't have annexing for a while?
Yeah, I think that's entirely dependent on the rate of growth. We do have room for, and Brian can talk to this a little better, but I believe we have room for all three phases on the current site. It's just going to be very tight.
I see, okay. So I guess that's a big fill-in-the-blank for me there. That's the information that I needed to know. It sounds like we don't need the Adient property. I'm extraordinarily cautious about taking on such a burden because of the unknowns. And so I think I'm ready to leave it there, Your Honor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember CEO, any questions? Mr. CEO, are you still with us?
He's muted, Your Honor.
Oh, okay. Unfortunately, I cannot unmute him.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you now, Jack. Please proceed.
Sharon, in the past, there was a fellow who was trying to purchase the property. He was in the process of doing environmental remediation and so on, but it seemed like every time he turned over another stone, he found some other pool of stuff on the property that required even further cleanup. So how well-documented is what's there now? Or would that be discovered through the Phase 1 environmental?
That would have to be discovered through the Phase 1 environmental, and that is an excellent point. I mean, one of the things with corrective action is that it involves a fairly thorough study, but if you find new information out there, that just adds to the number of areas that need to be investigated. And that's one of the reasons why determining how thorough they have been and how close they are to a no further action type of determination is, I think, critical to this review.
Okay.
Councilmember CEO, an example, I think that Sharon had raised when we discussed this earlier was, you know, it's possible because it's a newer contaminant that they haven't looked that closely at PFAS on that site. Should they find PFAS, you know, that could just open a whole new volume of concerns. Am I saying that right, Sharon?
Yes, that's correct. There may be a new contaminant found, and even a no further action is not going to give you coverage for that type of thing. And PFAS is a good example because it probably was not part of a study that would have taken place more than five years ago.
Okay. All right, now, my last question then would be, as prospective owners, would we have standing to conduct the Phase 1 and Phase 2 environmental on the property?
If you can get access from the property owner, you would need to have that to conduct that work because it would require you to at least be on site.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. CEO. Councilmember Kamara Sulak, any questions? He might be muted as well. Councilmember Kamara Sulak, are you there? Is he not on, Chris? My apologies, just give us a second.
I don't see him.
Okay. Was he there at the beginning? Somebody, I believe he was, yeah.
Yeah, I don't see him now.
Okay. All right, well, we'll note that Councilmember Kamara Sulak at the present is not with us, but if he logs back on, we will be sure to afford him the opportunity to ask questions or raise concerns. From my perspective, it seems apparent that there are certain pitfalls to acquiring the bulk of the former Universal diecast Hoover Ball Baring site on the west side of Monroe Street. But I think we owe it to ourselves and the community, not just from the perspective of expanding wastewater services, but also just being good stewards of our environment ecosystem and know what's going on in our city, to do a Phase 1 evaluation of the existing site and the two former Universal diecast Hoover Ball Baring parcels on the east and west side of Monroe. And I would note, and this will be, it'll be interesting if there's, well, first, if there's consensus to move forward and we do a Phase 1 environmental on these parcels, it'll be interesting what is revealed, excuse me, on both parcels. Because my understanding, being slightly knowledgeable of the history and activity on site, is most of the industrial functions happened on the larger parcel to the west. The eastern parcel that abuts our existing wastewater treatment facility and now houses a building that was the office for Foley's development, was primarily parking over the years for Universal diecast, or at least that's my understanding. So it may be less precarious, we'll find out, to acquire that site, or to potentially acquire that site to expand wastewater services. I think it's clear from a cost perspective that expanding in place, adding technology is the best bet for this community. But again, I think a first step would be to conduct a Phase 1 environmental assessment on these parcels and do that in conjunction with Acting City Manager Green, continuing to work aggressively to establish a contact at Adient and ideally get an individual to come before City Council and present, to fill us in on where they've been in the past 12 months, but more importantly, talk about where they'll be going in the next six to 18 months. So that's my perspective. Mayor Tim Gierbaugh, your thoughts?
Just real quick, I was in messaging with Kevin, and he says he can see us and hear us, but he's going to log off and try and log back in.
Okay.
I agree that I think we need to have a better understanding of what those properties entail. I mean, Adient has done so much cleanup of it right now that I think they would have a significant amount of information and such that we could gain before we have to maybe spend a whole lot of money doing a study on it. But, you know, that is one thing we need to do, just to understand what is. As for the other property, I think it would benefit us to acquire the one at least on the east side, just because it would give us access into that property. And my understanding from history that there could be something buried underneath there, even though they did use it as a parking lot. I think it was sealed over. So again, it makes sense to do that. And if we expand on that property, then it makes sense to at least acquire a minimum amount of property to go forward with it. So from my perspective right now, I'm fine with consideration of some type of environmental thing. I do know it's going to be a consideration that they're private properties right now and to get them to do that, but we should be able to get enough information from, I think, public records and whatever else from state to go at least that level before we start going into the other ones, because then you're talking about acquisition and then other issues, potentially eminent domain and concerns like that. And if I was a property owner, I'd be scared to have somebody come in and start digging on my property. So we need to make sure that we do what are steps in a very logistical way.
Okay, very good. Councilwoman Dillon?
I concur with what Mr. Gierbaugh just said.
Councilmember Delarco?
I as well. I think that's the best way forward.
Okay. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. I agree. I think what you and Mr. Gierbaugh say are very wise. I wonder, could you describe a little bit? So if I were looking at a map and you're discussing this eastern site, where is that? Is there a street address for an old house? Or, you know, for somebody who isn't familiar, how would they know where that is?
Yeah, so the parcel to the east of Monroe Street, again, there's a small structure on site that would have been built by Foley in the mid-2000s as his leasing office. I don't have the address off the top of my head, but there would be an address for that parcel. It is significantly smaller than the larger parcel to the west, where most of the industrial activity transpired from the late 1940s until operations ceased in the mid-1980s. But yeah, we can certainly get an address for that site. And again, it's my understanding, Mr. Gierbaugh may be correct, there could be contaminants buried underground, but for much of the history of Universal diecast, that was used as parking, employee parking.
I appreciate it. So is that the structure that's right before the wastewater treatment plan? If I'm traveling south?
Correct, correct. Yep, excuse me.
All right.
Yep.
It's a prefab building.
That'll help people.
Yep, it's a prefab building. It's that parcel, and then you hit the drive to enter our wastewater treatment facility.
Okay, all right. So anybody looking at a map could know?
Absolutely.
That it's the structure before the wastewater treatment plan.
Yep.
And then I guess, my only other question, what is the chance that we're doing an environmental study and we won't find everything we need to find? You know, when Mr. Gierbaugh said there were things buried, is there anything else that we need to be worried about?
Yep, that's a very good question. Sharon, are you still present? Because I think you're probably best equipped to answer that. Obviously, certain things will be revealed in a Phase 1 environmental, but, you know, actual testing of soil and material is usually done as part of a Phase 2.
That's correct. So any testing would be done as part of a Phase 2. And even with testing, there are some times when you don't catch something because you just don't have a piece of information. But in addition to the work that they will have done recently, Phase 1 will go into issues like aerial photographs of the area to see if there were areas that had a different use historically, seeing if there are areas of soil disturbance where it's likely that there may have been some landfilling activities at the time. And so those resources will all go into identifying these environmental question marks that I had referenced earlier.
So hearing this information, I'm most comfortable with testing our current site and the Adient site on the east side. I don't have any objection if councilmembers think we should do the Adient property on the west side of the street. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember CEO, anything you'd like to add?
No, I simply concur with what's gone before.
Okay, very good. I'll ask again, is Councilwoman Kamara Sulak, has he been able to log back on? Kevin, are you with us? Okay. So this is directed to Acting City Manager Green. What I would propose is this, Mike, based on the consensus that I've heard from my colleagues this evening. I think working with staff and our consultant, we should be prepared to act at our next meeting or at the very latest, at our first meeting in August, to approve Phase 1 environmental assessments for our existing plant and both Universal or both parcels that were formerly Universal diecast Hoover Ball Baring. In the meantime, you had indicated at the beginning of our work meeting that you had reached out to our new contact at Adient. I would give that individual another, you know, maybe one or two business days if you have not heard back from him or her by the close of business or near the close of business Wednesday, I would try to reach out again. Because again, establishing a relationship with that individual, understanding what's transpired in the last year, and understanding what their plans are for the ensuing six to 18 months is beneficial, not only as it relates to this subject, but to the overall health and well-being of the community.
Sounds good, sir. We'll get on that.
Okay, very good. I'll ask one more time. Was Councilmember Kamara Sulak able to join us?
He's got the same thing. Chris is checking, I see, but Kevin hasn't been able to get through.
Okay. Anybody from staff or, Mr. Rubel, do you care to make any additional comments at this time?
No, no, sir.
Okay. Anybody else from staff or the attorney's office do wish to speak? Okay, if there's nothing further then from anybody from council, the chair would be willing to entertain a motion to adjourn this work meeting at 6:44, allowing us a brief break before our regular meeting convenes at 7:00.
Mayor, I have a question.
Please.
It's showing...
Actually, Councilwoman Dillon has a quick question, and then we'll entertain a motion, Mr. CEO.
Thank you. It's showing there's eight chats. Are those questions that need to be addressed?
We can find out. Clerk Royal, the screen indicates that there were, it looks like eight comments or questions provided via Zoom. Can you enlighten us, are those comments for this meeting, or are they applicable to the regular meeting that begins at 7:00?
They were for this meeting, but part of them, I was trying to get Kevin in, and so I was chatting with Kevin.
Okay.
And then Kristen was having a hard time hearing you, so she had texted me. And then there's one from me to Chris, trying to get that fixed.
Okay, so the record will reflect, none of those were comments or questions raised by citizens?
No.
Okay, very good. Mr. CEO, would you still like to offer a motion to adjourn at 6:45?
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Or say nay. Ayes have it, and we'll convene into regular session in about 15 minutes. Thank you all.
Thanks, everyone.
Chris, why don't you give Kevin a call?
Yeah.
He's tested everything. He tried his mic and everything, so.
Yeah.
I can't hear Kristen to save my life.
Yeah, I think what's happening is Zoom is a really aggressive kind of normalizer, and I think her fan in the background, so when it picks up the fan, it kind of lowers her, and then you...
I see, I see. We're in this corner, so.
So he's right there.
I've got two numbers for Kevin. Do you know which one it is by chance?
Yeah, just a second here. I thought I did.
So are we still live?
Kevin is 734.
Yes, this is still on. It's muted, though.
734, 834, 1943. Trent Longmore, editorial piece.
Snow belting. Bad mouthing.
We're going to find out that the Adient property is cleaner than what we all... Yeah, that 237 was where the landfill was too, underneath that parking lot, on the other side. Because, yeah, that's where, because my dad remembers throwing old batteries down there, tires. There might actually be an old car down there.
Car down there.
I'm looking here at an aerial photo and seeing if it's...
I know, I was trying to do the same. I was trying to find an aerial photo.
I got one that showed the parking lot, but nothing before that. There's one from 1933, or '32, I think, but I don't have it up here. I don't know what to do with it. I might actually have it, but I don't recall if it, I don't recall if it comes far enough south. I don't think it does. It just says Henry Street.
237.
Yep. Okay, so let me see. So what user name are you under right now? You're under...
It says it's...
Kevin? Because I've got two of you in here.
It's rented out to someone.
Close it, okay.
Okay.
Must have a bathroom in it.
I would assume so.
No. I'd be surprised if they put a shower or tub in there, though.
Okay. So we've got two. I'm going to try to ask, okay, so it looks like one is starting video. Weird, okay. Yeah, in the bottom-left section, do you see where it says like unmute and start video when you're in the...
Because actually, I have to, we have a landlocked piece of property that I have to go back and find out where the original farmer's lane was.
Can you do it for free on their website?
No, I don't think so.
Just open the browser, go to that zoom.us.
I can try.
Is the link?
Want to move the flags behind you?
Just, it doesn't matter, Firefox, whatever browser you want to use, it's fine.
Do you want a visual behind here, or is that fine?
I was expecting to just record it right off of Zoom.
Yeah, yeah, if you want. I think what we need to do is download the app, so zoom.us.
Spent my 4th of July writing it, so I'm saying it in person.
That you're willing to admit and publish?
Once you're on the site there at the top, it says resources, and what you want to do is download the Zoom client.
You can't stop 15 to 25-year-olds in the summertime.
No.
That I can't help you with.
So what's the scoop with all these... So what's the scoop with all these Celine kids, like, getting COVID tests?
I heard it was all, it all started with Ken Daniels.
We're still live, we're not muted.
I heard we were.
I think it should be muted.
People in the community are telling me we're not.
Okay, hold on.
I'm not worried anybody said anything inappropriate.
Yeah, it could be just the video going, but yeah, I can just turn the video off. Oh, I have not, actually, sorry. I was getting caught up, I was off last week, so.
Anybody in your family work at Universal diecast?
Really?
No.
No, my, my family was all electricians, they were working on homes.
My late neighbor man, Ken Rogers, he was a sales rep for there for years.
My aunt may have worked there for a little while, back in the 50s.
It was the, when it was conceived, that was the only industrial game in town. There's no industry.
When did it open?
Well, I think late 40s.
Thank you, thank you very much. Clerk Royal, are you with us?
I am.
I'd ask that you please call the role, including councilmembers and staff.
Mayor Morrow.
Present.
Mayor Coacham Girba.
Present.
Councilmember Seo.
Present.
Councilmember Mitchell. Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Delarco.
Here.
Councilmember Camaro Sulek.
I'm here in video and audio.
That's perfect.
Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Green.
Here.
City Engineer, DPW Director Fordice.
Here.
Wastewater Treatment Plant Superintendent Baragowski.
Present.
Keith Hart.
Here.
Director Scruggs.
Here.
Treasurer is not here, but Miley Weberling is here on her behalf.
Very good. Thank you very much. A quorum is present. At this time, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as submitted unless there are amendments.
Your Honor, I would like to pull an item out of the consent agenda, the supervisor Mitchell.
Yep, I apologize, Councilwoman Mitchell, we will certainly pull whatever items you want, you want to be removed from the consent agenda, but let's do that when we actually get to the consent agenda.
Right, see.
Mr. Seo, would you like to move then to approve the agenda as submitted?
Mayor, could I make, make a recommendation?
Uh, yes, Mr. Fordice, the floor is yours.
If we could switch the order of items 20-100 and 20-101.
So you want to take 20, 101 first, and then 20, 100 second?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Seo, would you move to approve the agenda then as amended?
I would.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, signify by saying aye.
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 Or say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. There are no absences this evening, so we'll proceed with my Charter Sanctions State of the City address. Those members who are present this evening in council chambers received a hard copy. Those of you who are participating remotely, we will provide you an electronic copy at the conclusions of tonight's meeting, and we will also provide an electronic copy to our press contacts as well. Good evening. City Council, Acting City Manager Green, City Clerk Royal, distinguished guests, and my fellow citizens. My friends, like you, I never imagined a 2020 quite like this. Celine, in the international news for incidents of racism and intolerance, the COVID-19 global health pandemic, millions of Americans sick and tens of thousands deceased, our economy shut down with friends and neighbors laid off, furloughed, or living with countless unknowns. As I've stated before, these are challenging and unprecedented times, but we will not be deterred or discouraged. Uncertain times call for strong and steady leadership, and that is precisely what we shall provide. Discrimination and bigotry will not be tolerated in the Celine community, as demonstrated by the many Celine community members standing up against systematic racism and injustice. City government partnering with our regional stakeholders will work to create a more inclusive and welcoming community, one where diversity is celebrated and all of our residents feel safe and valued. Last year, or later this year, excuse me, with the assistance of the MSU Extension, specifically Mr. DiNardo Pianza, the city will require DEI, Diversity Equity and Inclusion trainings, for all city employees. We also plan to include other community leaders and individuals from marginalized or underrepresented groups in these efforts. Additionally, with the assistance of Councilmember Camaro Sulek, we are evaluating the creation of a diversity task force. Needless to say, the group's mission must be clear and focused, and membership should appropriately represent the perspectives of all groups in our area, especially those that are often overlooked. Earlier this winter, the listening session we co-hosted with County Commissioners Beeman and Brabeck was very successful. As soon as it's safe to do so, I hope to organize and host another such session later this year, or we may explore our virtual options. Finally, following the example of the City of Ypsilanti and the Waschnau County Board of Commissioners, I'll be presenting City Council at our July 20th meeting with a resolution to declare racism a public health crisis. Racism is insidious and destructive. If we're to resolve the inequities that exist in our society, we must begin by acknowledging them as a community. Throughout this national crisis, the effects of the global pandemic have been devastating. But as I'm fond of saying, Celineans always do their part, and I've been impressed by the vigilance, creativity, and generosity of our residents and business owners. In the coming weeks and months, it's imperative that each of us continue to act appropriately, especially in the wake of increased infection rates in our state and elsewhere. Please continue to avoid large group gatherings, engage in routine cleaning and disinfection, and please wear a mask or face cover when you leave your home or associate with individuals that you do not cohabitate with. No one likes to wear a mask, but we wear them to help one another, especially the most vulnerable in our community. Our constituents will notice that services are returning, and as of July 1st, City Hall has fully reopened. However, for the foreseeable future, municipal services will be provided with special adapted protocols to protect the health of both our employees and the citizens we represent. Businesses in Celine face a daunting new set of challenges, with changing health and safety restrictions relating to the pandemic and an uncertain economy. Now more than ever, we must do what we can to support our local businesses, some of which are struggling to adapt and re-adapt while continuing to conduct business in the Celine area and serve Celine community members. Working in tandem with Celine Main Street, I'm pleased that City Council approved a recovery zone in the heart of our downtown, allowing our local shops and restaurants the opportunity to expand outdoor seating and amenities on Fridays and Saturdays. The proposal to intermittently close Ann Arbor Street from McKay to US 12 and Henry to Michigan Ave should be carefully evaluated, as I believe this approach may improve the vitality of our downtown. vitality of our downtown. In fact, I see it as something we should consider in future years, even after the pandemic has passed. With the support and cooperation of Celine Community Television, the Celine Community Television Network, we plan to film an economic development PSA highlighting a number of local businesses and encouraging additional investment in the Celine community. The video shoot had been scheduled for the May 15th, but in light of the circumstances, we had to postpone. However, we look forward to rescheduling, as this video will be a useful tool in our ongoing efforts to attract additional jobs and amenities to our area. Further, as soon as we're safely able to do so, the city will organize our eighth annual small business summit, our annual large business gathering, and our third job fair event, entitled, Find Your Future in Celine. The city remains committed to sharing timely and relevant information with our local entrepreneurs and assisting them with talent recruitment and retention. As I've stated publicly, during challenging economic times, it's essential that we find new and innovative ways to support our local business community. Accordingly, in an attempt to, accordingly, I'm attempting to schedule a meeting of the community recruitment and retention team, composed of representatives from the city, Celine Main Street, Celine Area Chamber of Commerce, and Celine Area Schools. I'm excited to collaborate with this talented group to find new ways to support our businesses. As I expressed in January, our city's long-term sustainability is predicated on support of a policy I've referred to as smart growth, thoughtful strategic expansion of our housing stock, and business diversification. This will grow our tax base, increase our utility customers, attract additional jobs and services that will improve and enhance our citizens' quality of life. I'm proud of our efforts in support of a number of new housing projects in recent years. However, I deeply regret that we were unable to approve a development agreement with MI Homes, Andalina Farms, located at the intersection of West Michigan Ave and Austin Road. However, approving the proposed development agreement would have placed the city in a precarious situation, subject to additional liability and potential litigation. Approving the agreement would not have been prudent. As stability and certainty returned to the market, I hope that MI Homes reconnects with the city to discuss our options moving forward. From a growth, land management, and environmental perspective, I still believe it is in the community's best interest for Andalina Farms to become part of our city. Affordable housing will also remain a priority, so that our community can continue to be home to people and families from all walks of life. The city looks forward to partnering with the Washtenaw County Office of Community and Economic Development, along with other regional stakeholders, such that Celine can make tangible progress on the availability of quality affordable housing options. As I state every year, our first responders can rest assured that we will provide them the resources they need to effectively serve and protect the residents of Celine. Both the Celine Police and Fire Departments are well managed, under the leadership of Chief Hart and Chief Heft, respectively. I am very pleased that our Celine Police Department will be adding another full-time officer and additional dispatchers to the department's roster, allowing for more flex, excuse me, allowing for more staff flexibility and enhancing overall public safety services. I'm also delighted that our 2020-2021 general operating budget includes funds to restore the department's deputy police chief position, which was vacated in 2011. Chief Hart will likely make a public announcement later this week. Needless to say, however, our new deputy chief has stellar credentials, deep roots in the Celine area, and will be an excellent addition to Celine city government. As was reported this past spring, we're pleased that fair and unbiased policing standards have been integrated into the Celine Police Department's policy manual. Additionally, as we will discuss later this evening, the chief is spearheading another initiative I strongly support, offering scholarships, excuse me, sponsorships for young people to attend the police academy. Sponsorships will provide financial support to individuals who may lack the financial resources necessary to pursue their academic objectives. Further, if Celine intends to maintain a competitive edge and attract a diverse workforce, this is a program we must support and approve. Also this evening, I'm requesting that City Council approve the creation of a risk mitigation working group to review all operations and divisions of city government to reduce our risk and liability. As I've mentioned at our most recent meetings, deficiencies exist, and some, as do some internal safeguards. However, under the leadership of Ms. Lori Champion and Mayor Protem Gierbaum, I am confident these issues can be resolved. Transitioning now to infrastructure. I was onsite at our wastewater treatment plant this past Monday, June 29th, and was pleased with the status of the RBCs, Bio Scrubber, and Nova filters. Additionally, obnoxious odors were almost nonexistent. In fact, I only detected sewage odors near the headworks when I first arrived onsite. However, rest assured that the city will continue to monitor these issues closely. Also, in the spirit of openness and transparency, we will host tours in a public open house at our wastewater treatment plant later this fall. Also, staff and legal counsel are working diligently to revolve, resolve a ACO, Administrative Consent Order, with the State of Michigan, more specifically, the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy. Earlier this evening, City Council continued our deliberations on the future of wastewater services. The genesis of our discussions was a sighting study completed by Tetra Tech in January of this year. The city's focus will be on improving this vital service, investing in new technology, and gradually expanding capacity. Council will take additional action later this summer and fall. This construction season, the city will complete a number of resurfacing projects, including two initiatives we had hoped to start in 2019, but due to a lack of bids, will be completed this summer. Those streets are Kevlin Drive and River Oaks Boulevard. The city will also complete projects on Mills Road and Woodland Drive, and hopefully will approve work on, for Watson Drive, Whittier Court, and a portion of Nichols Drive as well. In January, I was delighted to announce that the city had received $40,000, a $40,000 grant from the Washtenaw County Connecting Communities Program to evaluate the feasibility of a non-motorized pathway, a riverwalk, spanning the length of Milpon Park, and allowing us to leverage our greatest natural asset, the Celine River and our Milpon. This initiative will take several years to complete, but this is an important first step. We will now begin work on design and engineering, and will aggressively compete for dollars to construct said pathway in the ensuing years. In the spring of 2019, and again in January of this year, the city hosted three visioning sessions for our rec center. They were well attended, and we received excellent feedback from community residents and rec center patrons. Later this summer, specifically in August, City Council will receive a report and an analysis from our Parks and Recreation Department, and subsequently consider what changes, improvements would enhance the viability of this valuable community resource. Earlier this spring, City Council considered and adopted our general operating budget for fiscal year 2020-2021. Our constituents can rest assured that we exercise the same fiscal prudence and strategic thinking that we have utilized this past decade. Moving forward, we will continue to prioritize the city's infrastructure and legacy costs, specifically retiree healthcare and pensions. In fact, I hope to make additional contributions to MERS and OPEB later this year. The Code Review Task Force will be meeting again on July 22nd, and will begin work on drafting the necessary ordinances and policies to permit regulated medical marijuana establishments in our community. The Code Review Task Force will also be discussing the city's property maintenance policies and transitioning Code Review and the Oakwood Cemetery Task Force into permanent city boards or committees, allowing them to meet more frequently and effectively deal with pertinent city business. As many are aware, this is a time of transition here at the City of Celine. Frankly, I must acknowledge and thank former city manager Todd Campbell for his more than 12 years of extraordinary service to our community. I join my colleagues in wishing Todd and his family the very best in their future endeavors. Subsequent to Mr. Campbell's departure, we formed a transition team, which is met weekly, and later this evening will establish a search committee for a permanent city administrator, along with hiring an independent third party to assist with a thorough and comprehensive search. Mike Green, our Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director, will serve as acting city manager for the time being. In collaboration with his colleagues, he'll work expeditiously to fill other key positions within our organization, including the DPW director and HR consultant. In the ensuing weeks and months, city staff will continue to provide world-class service for our residents and business owners, the services that they have come to rely on. In conclusion, on July 7th, I'll be participating in a live stream interview with the Celine Post. I'll be discussing this address and responding to questions and concerns from Celine residents. If you'd like to participate, please log on to the Celine Post this Tuesday at 3:00 PM. If you're unavailable, but would like to ask questions or share ideas, you're encouraged to email the editor, Tran Longmore, in advance of tomorrow's interview. Also, my next mayor coffee hour will be held on Friday, August 7th, beginning at 8:00 AM. A number of issues will be covered, but the primary focus will be on the future of wastewater services in the Celine community. Additional details will follow. If appropriate, the coffee hour will be hosted in council chambers; if not, we'll hold it on Zoom. For the foreseeable future, I will continue to provide weekly PSAs. If you'd like to view them, please connect with me on Facebook or go to the city's general government Facebook page. Please note that the city will continue to proactively communicate and solicit feedback from the people we represent. We encourage our residents to connect with us online and on social media, and download the free See Click Fix app to their smartphone or electronic device. Let me end by acknowledging the years of service and the contributions made by my city council colleagues. Also sincerest thanks to our very dedicated and talented staff, who care deeply for this community and provide exceptional service to our residents on a daily basis. As city leaders, we will continue to lead Celine forward, based on our strong community values of taking care of one another, especially the disenfranchised and the most vulnerable. We have a vision, a focus on caring for our residents, economic development, investing in vital public services, and pursuing best practices for organizational efficiency. In the end, the city's best asset is our people. I've said it before, Celine is a special place because of the character and generosity of our residents, and that's never been more apparent than in a crisis. Great challenges remain, but greater things lie ahead of us. I continue to believe that our best days are yet to come. Thank you, God bless you, and may God bless Celine. We transition now to citizen comments on agenda items. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and make comment or question on an item that appears on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. The record will reflect, we do not have any members of the public, well, actually, we do, other... Would anybody present this evening care to make a public comment? The record will reflect they do not. Clerk Royal, did we receive any written comments in advance of tonight's meeting? Or is there anyone who has typed in questions or concerns since our meeting began a few minutes after 7:00 PM?
We did not. We did get one from Darren McCluskey during the work meeting, and he was, he stated that the address you were looking for was 237 Monroe Street.
Very good. Thank you, Darren, and we appreciate your participation and attendance at our 6:00 PM work meeting. We'll provide just a few more, well, probably about 30 seconds. If there are members of the general public who are participating this evening, and you'd like to type in a question, concern, or thought, we would welcome you to do so at this time. Please note that this citizen comment period is limited to agenda items, but that includes both enumerated action items and items listed for discussion. The second public comment at the end of tonight's meeting, you'll be free to address any local issues you care to address. So one last call. Are there any citizen comments this evening? Okay, the record will reflect there are none. Do we have representatives from the Washtenaw County Road Commission in attendance this evening?
Yes, you do.
Oh, very good. Cheryl, are you there?
I am.
Cheryl, welcome. So I'd like to introduce Managing Director of the Washtenaw County Road Commission, Cheryl Sedell. We welcome here and welcome you here this evening, Cheryl, and I understand you are going to give us a presentation, reference the road village that was approved by the Washtenaw County electorate in 2016 and is up for renewal this August, specifically August 4th.
Exactly. So, thank you very much for having me tonight, and I'm going to attempt to share my screen and hope that this goes well.
Very good. And actually, Director, if subsequent to this meeting, if you could get the slide presentation that you're providing us to either myself or the city clerk, that's something we'd like to disseminate via social media and on the city's website. You know, as you and I discussed previously, it's imperative that our residents are well-informed and can make an intelligent decision when they go to the polls in less than a month's time.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to share this presentation, and then also at the end, we've got links or information on our website, and we'd be more than happy to have anybody visit or ask any questions that they may have. We have a lot of information that we're happy to share on that.
Very good. Thank you, Cheryl. The floor is yours, if you want to take maybe five to 10 minutes to go through your presentation.
Yep, I'll run through it very quickly and happy to entertain any questions at that time. Again, my name is Cheryl Sedell. I'm the Managing Director of the Washtenaw County Road Commission, and here tonight to talk about the road and non-motorized village. I'll give you just a brief, some information on the background of the existing village and talk about the proposed renewal, and certainly answer any of your questions. So a little bit of background. Our story really starts back in 2014. At that point in time, the county roads, really all the county roads, and specifically the roads under the jurisdiction of the road commission were in terribly poor shape, and that represented decades of underfunding at both the state and the federal level. So the Washtenaw County Road Commission did reach out to the county board to explore funding options. Road commissions do not have authority to levy any taxes on their own, so we are required to work through the county board in order to accomplish that. The county board at that time set up a roads funding subcommittee, and for two years, we were successful working under Public Act 283, where the county board imposed a one-half mill, a village each year for road purposes. And so that happened in 2015 and 2016, and while it was successful and some good projects were completed, the county board was looking for something a little different. First of all, they wanted to make sure that they had the approval and were doing what the voters wanted with respect to road funding. They also wanted something that was a little longer in duration instead of the year-to-year, that would allow the opportunity to do a little bit more planning, potentially partner projects with other work in the area. And since what we try to do on the county level is to give back to each community, the township specifically, the amount that's raised within those communities for our smaller townships, that allows us to sort of collect those funds over that four-year period and potentially do a bigger project as opposed to trying to do a smaller project in each year. From the county board's perspective, the 20% non-motorized was also very important. That had not been a possibility under the original imposed villages under Public Act 283. So the roads funding subcommittee did recommend a four-year, one-half mill, a village to be placed on the 2016 November ballot. A plan was put together that was led by the road commission. We reached out to all the cities and villages and put together the specific projects that would be completed over that four-year period. We're very pleased to say that in 2016, that was approved by 71% of the voters, and in fact, 137 out of 141 precincts did vote yes for that village. So how that works out is, right now, that generates roughly $7.3 million each year. The road commission receives about 3.3 on behalf of the townships. We spend that countywide. Cities and villages receive about 2.5 million collectively, and that's returned back in the manner in which it's generated. And Washtenaw County Parks receives the 20% for the non-motorized, and right now, that's about $1.5 million. So we are in the last year, but we've completed three years' worth of projects. So so far, on the county's perspective, we've been able to complete 110 road projects over 170 miles and 14 non-motorized projects in... I'll give you just a couple examples. We like to show off a little bit here. Celine Mile and Road, I think most of you are familiar with that on the south side as you're coming into town. This is pretty typical of a paved road improvement that we've been able to accomplish under the village that was done last year. And then, believe it or not, almost half the system on the county side is still gravel. So we've been able to do some really nice gravel road improvements, and here's a nice example on Willow Road in Celine and York Townships. And we also sometimes are able to take those village dollars and use them to leverage and partner with other funding sources. And a good example of that would be Textile Road in Pittsfield Township, where we used it towards the road project, and then the township was also able to have some connect community funds that went into the... community funds that went into the greenway along there. As I said, County Parks does receive the 20% non-motorized, and there's two very important programs that they run with those funds. One of them is the Connecting Communities Program, which you're obviously familiar with, having been a recipient of that last year. And then, in addition, the Border to Border Trail, which is a significant trail that runs really through the heart of Washtenaw County. And as you can see, they've been able to build certain components, and others are under construction right now, and yet others are still in the planning phases. But it really is the heart and soul of the non-motorized system that we have in Washtenaw County. So again, it's been a very successful program for the past four years. So the first thing we did as we were entering our fourth year is asked, do we even need a millage at this point? We've been able to accomplish a lot of good work. And also, in 2015, the state legislature did approve a transportation package, which increased the gasoline taxes and registration fees for all of us within the state. But as we took a look, and what's true on the county system is true for most of our cities and villages as well, is that unfortunately, decades of underfunding, we had dug ourselves a pretty big hole. And on the county side, if we were to take all of our paved roads, just our paved roads, and try to get those into good condition today, we're still looking at a price tag of in excess of $52 million. In addition, that transportation package that was passed in 2015, half of that is scheduled to come out of the State General Fund. And as we all know, right now, with the pandemic situation, there's a lot of pressures on that general fund. So whether or not half of that transportation package lives up to what we've all hoped that it would, there is some legitimate concern that that may or may not happen. So the answer to our question is, yes, we believe that there still is need for a countywide road and non-motorized millage, and it's very nice to have those local dollars raised and stay local. So again, meeting with the county, through the county, with the roads funding subcommittee, explored a couple of different options and really came back to the fact that we had a model that had worked very well. So what was agreed upon, recommended from that roads funding subcommittee and ultimately approved by the county board, was renewal and restoration of the existing four-year millage. So this would now be for the years 2021 through 2024. It would remain at a one-half mill, although with the restoration component, it will come back up to the full half mill that had been reduced under Headley. 20% will continue to be funded for non-motorized projects, and now that should raise approximately $8.9 million per year. And as Mayor Marl indicated, that is now on the August 4, 2020 ballot. So real quick, what would that look like? If $8.9 million per year, that would equate to approximately $4 million coming to the Road Commission, again, on behalf of the townships, cities and villages collectively receiving $3.1 million, and Washtenaw County Parks and Recreation receiving the 20% at $1.8 million each year. Again, we've put a four-year plan together, working with the different cities and villages and county parks, and here's an example of what that would look like. On the county side of things, that's roughly 218 miles of improvements with three intersections and a price tag of almost $18 million. So obviously, the Road Commission will be putting a little bit of money into that, but we believe that to be a good investment. And cities and villages, again, would receive about $3.1 million each year, and the projects right now that the city of Celine has submitted, that's roughly $475,000. Cities and villages do pick their own road and non-motorized projects. That's been an ongoing planning process as we work with each of them. Here's a quick snapshot of what the city's projects look like. And again, on behalf of County Parks, like indicated, there's two programs that they fund with that. That's the Border to Border Trail, and they have 10 different pathway projects that they would be looking at funding with the millage over the next four years should it be approved, and continuing to fund the Connecting Communities Grant Program. And County Parks is quite proud of the fact that for every dollar, every millage dollar that they have received, they have been able to leverage that into two more dollars. So they expect that if this is approved, that that $6.8 million would translate into more than $13 million in non-motorized projects across the county. They have been very, very successful. So in closing, like I said in the beginning, we do have a lot of information. It's on our website. It includes an interactive project map that you can hover over any of the links for projects to get a little bit more information about what those may be. There's detailed project lists that are available on the website, and in addition, we have some general, some frequently asked questions and answers that are there. With that, I would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Excellent, Cheryl. That's a very thorough and well-done presentation. We appreciate that, and we're sure that the residents and taxpayers here in Celine will also enjoy and hopefully access the information before they vote on August 4. Let's begin with questions from the dais. Mayor Protem Girba, any questions?
Just real quick, as looking at the non-motorized projects, do we anticipate more happening in the southwest quadrant of Washtenaw County? I mean, connecting us to Ann Arbor or Chelsea are some of those aspects?
Right. Well, border to border, there's, the map, I won't scroll back right now, but the border to border itself is a prescribed location, so that does not tend to come down into the southwest corner. But the Connecting Communities Program does, that is a grant-based program. And I know that the Manchester area has been actively working with County Parks, and the city of Celine has been working, and I know that in the long run, they would love to have a complete network that benefits all of us and certainly can bring those of us that are in the southwest portion of the county and become connected with the other cities and certainly north and eastward as well.
That's good to hear, because I think that's one of our things that, being in this location of the county, is that we're trying to become more, I think, involved in trying to get more funding for those type of recreational aspects here in our area that haven't been successful in the past. So that's all I really have.
Very good. Councilwoman Dillon, any questions?
No, Mr. Girba just asked and answered my question.
Very good. Councilmember Delarco?
I have no questions. I thought the presentation was very thorough and informative. Thank you.
Very good. Going to the three who are participating remotely. Councilwoman Mitchell, any questions?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you so much for visiting today. Really appreciate you being here this fall. What can we say to voters, and I'm starting to talk more about the fact that we have a little less than a month until we vote, and people are not ready for that. What do you say to people who are hesitant to invest in a millage right now at this particular time?
Well, I guess it would depend on exactly what the reason for the hesitancy is. This is renewal, so this is not a new tax or an increase in tax. This is, I mean, I hate to say a tax I've always already been paying, because we do think it's gone to good purpose, and we have examined whether there's still a need for it. We would not want to continue a program without there being a need. And that's also part of why we put the plan together, because we want voters to know where their funds are going. And so these are the projects that would be funded for those that live within the city of Celine. Those projects were developed by city of Celine staff. It was not the county that said to the city, this is what you should be doing. The city, we worked very closely with city staff to develop, well, they developed the projects, we just incorporated them into the plan from there. So certainly, I think that there is, hopefully, there's local support for that. But if they've got any questions, the information, what has been done in the past, that there's a lot of success, we've been able to complete what we said we were going to do. So I think we've got a very good track record, not just the county, but also the cities as well, and that we believe the need is there moving forward.
Thank you. That's the end of my questions, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember CEO, any questions or comments?
Just to say, good luck to you, Cheryl. I know, or Cheryl, it's a worthwhile project, and I know we appreciate from our end what funds we do get to help us with the road village.
Thank you.
And Councilmember Kamara Sulaq.
Thank you. I really appreciate the PowerPoint presentation, and I do have one question with the pie chart showing what the state funding has improved, where it shows the good is 43%, or 39%, and fair is 18%. How much has that changed? So in talking to taxpayers and in voting for this renewal, is there a correlation to this millage to an increase in the amount of roads that are good and fair and decrease in the amount that's poor?
I can get you the specifics. I don't have them right at my fingertips, but yes, we have those numbers, and yes, we have been able to demonstrate that with the four-year millage that we've had in place, we have improved the number of good roads or the miles of good roads and fair and reduced the number of poor. And one of the goals that we have, we use asset management, which is now becoming required statewide, but we're also trying to keep it in good and fair condition as well. So there's a whole methodology behind that, and I know the city's been doing as well. So I can, I have to see if you've got the same type of numbers that we do, but on a county level, I can certainly get those numbers to you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. You answered the question I asked and the second question that I would have asked.
Oh, okay.
As far as being able to maintain, I'm sure these are important questions that are on people's minds. So that's good to hear, and that's all I have. Thank you for the very thorough presentation.
Sure, happy to do so.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Kamara Sulaq. Cheryl, anything you'd like to add?
No, I would just mostly like to thank you again for your time tonight. Like I said, we've got a lot of information on our website. Be happy to send out the PowerPoint presentation for you to make available to your residents, and certainly, if you can link to our website as well, I think that there's a wealth of information. And if they have any questions from there, we're always happy to answer them.
Consider it done. Thank you so much for your time this evening. Like I said, the presentation was excellent, and have a wonderful evening, and thank you and your colleagues at the Washtenaw County Road Commission for all you do. It's acknowledged and appreciated.
Thank you. Have a very good evening.
Yep, bye-bye now.
Bye-bye.
Okay, we transition now to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion. However, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion. Councilwoman Mitchell, I understand there were some things that you would like to see removed from the consent agenda.
Thank you, Your Honor, just one.
Okay.
So that would be the appointment of staff to boards and commissions, item C-20-93.
Okay. So C-20-93 will now be the first item under new business. So with that, Councilwoman Mitchell, would you move to approve the consent agenda as amended?
Will, thank you, so moved.
Yep, and is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Girba. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda as amended signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We come now to unfinished business, and please note that at the beginning of the meeting, we have swapped item 20-100 and 20-01. So 01 will appear first. So we have three motions under unfinished business. The first is 20-99, award of CES for woodland. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 1, 2020 memo from City Engineer DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the recommendation to award the construction engineering survey and testing contract for a woodland drive improvement project to Fleece and Vanderbink at a not-to-exceed amount of $90,800.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by CEO to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mayor Protem Girba. Real quick, before I turn it over to DPW Director Fordice, I failed to mention this earlier. So this evening, because we're utilizing a hybrid approach, and three of my colleagues are present with me, I'm not going to be calling upon individuals to move in second motions. So if you're so inclined, feel free to move in second if you deem appropriate. And second, for those colleagues who are present with me at the dais, I'm not going to call on you as we work our way through the agenda. If you have a question or concern, just raise your hand. But to the three of you who are participating remotely, I will be calling on you before we vote on each motion to make sure that your questions and concerns have been addressed. So with that, DPW Director, do you care to, Fordice, do you care to make a brief report regarding your memo of July 1?
Sure, thank you. We previously awarded the construction phase of the woodland project, and we just didn't have the proposals quite in line for the construction engineering services, so bringing that to this meeting. We, on staff, have always preferred to have the design engineer continue on into the construction engineering phase, because we've had numerous discussions about the intent of each phase of the project, each detail, so they have much more familiarity with the project, and we find that that leads into a better product to have that same firm on board. So that's pretty much been our standard procedure for the past couple of decades, and Fleece and Vanderbink has submitted a proposal here to continue on with this project. Their budget is a little bit high in terms of the general guidelines of percentages, construction cost percentages for these types of services, but we are anticipating that the project will go a little bit faster than what they budgeted for and will only be billed for actual time and materials and services. So I expect this to come under budget. And we do have Dan Cabage on the meeting, who prepared the proposal. If we have any specific questions for him.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Fordice, and we welcome Mr. Cabage. Are there questions, comments? I'll start with folks at the dais. Councilwoman Dillon.
Thank you. Mr. Fordice, can you just clarify the percentage difference that, I don't understand your memo about being less aggressive. What exactly does that mean?
So Fleece and Vanderbink prepared their proposal before we had the construction schedule from the contractor. So they looked at the project and made an estimate of how long they would need to provide services, and so their proposal includes, I think, three or four weeks of additional oversight services that we don't anticipate actually needing based on the schedule that we got from the contractor.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any additional questions, comments from the dais? Then we'll transition to the three members who are participating remotely. Councilwoman Mitchell, any questions or comments?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Councilmember CEO.
On, Your Honor.
Councilmember Kamara Sulaq.
No questions or comments at this time.
Okay. If there's no subsequent discussion, we do have a motion on the floor moved by Girba, or excuse me, moved by CEO, seconded by Girba, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. We move on now to new business, item 20-101, award of Mills, Watson, Whittier, and Nichols Street Projects. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 1, 2020 memo from City Engineer DPW Director Fordice, and to approve or not to approve the recommendation to award the reduced scope of the 2020 street and utility projects, Mills, Watson, Whittier, and Nichols, to Fonsen Company Incorporated in the amount of $2,465,767.77, and authorize, not authorize, the mayor to execute the necessary documents. Move to acknowledge receipt. It's been moved by Mayor Protem Girba to simply acknowledge receipt. Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Fordice, do you care to make brief comment of your memo of July 1?
At the June 15 meeting, we discussed the bidding situation and the one bid that we received for a large group of projects. There was consensus to do a reduced scope for the streets in that bid that were closer to estimates. So that included Mills, Watson, Whittier, and Nichols, myself, and Dan Cabage and his team at Fleece and Vanderbink have been working with Fonsen to revise the bid to include just those four streets, and we added some money in there to provide for the utility stubs off of Mills into the Highland right-of-way, so that when we get back to that project, we don't need to disturb anything on Mills, we'll be ready to go. There were some, excuse me, some minor adjustments needed in the mobilization items. When we were doing the discussion on that, we had just kind of evenly split mobilization amongst the seven streets, but there were some included in here that had a little bit higher traffic control costs, which are mobilization items. So the total of this is about $70,000, what we discussed on June 15. But it all seems very fair and makes sense, and Fonsen was very cooperative in helping us put this together.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Fordice. And actually, I need to apologize to my colleagues. I failed to forward to you all an email I received earlier today. I just got swamped, but that's not an excuse, from the HOA representing the former Houghton School of Property, so that would be the homes on Vanessa Court and Bennett Street, expressing their strong support for a resurfacing project of Mills sometime this construction season. So again, my apologies that I did not forward that to you, but for your records, I'll make sure to get it to you before the close of business tomorrow. Questions or concerns for our DPW? for our DPW Director? Mr. Gearbaugh, did you want to begin as the mover of the motion?
Yeah, I can just ask just one question. Jeff, when you look at this compared to what our concerns were in terms of construction and everything, do you think this is doable and we'll achieve this within this construction season?
Yeah, that was part of our discussions with with the contractor, being certain that we could get this done in this construction season with awarding it about three weeks later than we originally anticipated when we put it out to bid. And they're on board with that. We should be able to finish this without any difficulties.
Excellent. Thank you for working on this.
Additional questions, comments from the dais? Again, we're simply considering his memo of July 1. Councilwoman Dillon.
Thank you. Mr. Fordice, I'm sorry, when you were responding before Mr. Gearbaugh's question, you sort of trailed off. There was some some other static on the line. And I'm not sure what you were you were saying. I think you were saying something about that there is still an increase or there was something built in. I'm sorry, I don't know what it was.
When we were discussing this on June 15, there were some numbers in front of you that Fleece and Vanderbilt had prepared from the the original bid. And that had split some of the costs evenly seven ways amongst the seven streets in the original project. And the reality of it is that those costs were not evenly spread between those seven streets. So when we sat down with the with Fonsen and went through a detailed analysis, some of those costs are more heavily weighed on on Mills. So we're about $70,000 more than we were discussing on June 15. So it's not necessarily it's an increase. It's just that when we were doing that analysis, we didn't have the costs distributed quite the way that we should should have been.
And the percentage, the overage percentage for these projects, is it still 25%? Is it higher or lower? I don't.
These four, these four are less than 25% over the original estimates.
Okay. And do you have a dollar amount that attaches to that 25% just ballpark?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay. It's just, it's a, it's a very large dollar amount for, for small streets.
Well, in terms of the overall scope of the project, the amount of asphalt and curb repair and limited utilities on East Forest, they're generally in line, yes. You know, two and a half million dollars is is kind of a big scary number, but that's, that's street construction. You know, that and that's, that's why we passed the millage so we would have this money available to to step it up and and start improving our our street infrastructure. So yes, it's it's a large number. There's no doubt about it. But it is, that's, that's what streets cost.
Okay. And they're, all of these streets have utility work associated with them. They're not just milling fills, correct?
These are, these are primarily pavement projects. That's, that's why they have less cost overruns than the other ones that we're not proceeding with at this point. So there are utility repairs, storm sewer repairs, there's sanitary work, there's water main replacement. So yeah, they're, they're full comprehensive projects.
Okay. And can you just remind me, last question, Mills would go from Bennett to, is it going all the way to Hollywood?
The, yes, South Hollywood.
Okay.
Hollywood's Porsche.
Right. Okay. Thank you very much.
Councilmember Del, any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Fordice.
Councilwoman Mitchell, any questions?
I'm sorry, I do have a question. Please excuse me, Mr. Fordice. Can you remind me which of the projects are being deferred to another time aside from Highland Drive? I can't remember from our last meeting.
So Highland and then Hillcrest and Lawson.
Hillcrest and Lawson. Now, is it, my understanding is that all three of those have had the significant overruns because there was significant utility work that was required along with the repaving?
That, yeah, that, those both had sanitary and water main replacement and some storm sewer work. So that was the pattern. And when, when Dan Cabage reached out to some folks in the industry on, you know, trying to understand the bid results that we got, the reports he got back from a couple of different contractors were that the underground work is very busy right now and all those bids are coming back high.
Mm-hmm. So, so I just want to understand what gets, what gets us from 4.5 million roughly to 2.5 million roughly is that we're foregoing those three streets and pursuing instead the the four that are on the memo today? Or was there a significant reworking of the bid after we decided to reappropriate what the priority was?
The only change was that we added the water and sanitary stubs off of Mills so that when we get back to Highland, we can make that connection without disturbing the new pavement that we put on Mills.
Okay, okay. And that's because Highland is stubbed, is that correct?
It will be stubbed with this project.
Okay. All right.
Because of the sanitary and water on Highland connect mains that are under Mills.
I see. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mitchell, any questions?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Mr. Fordice. I appreciate you being here. I think this is the third budget season that I've asked for Mills to be prioritized. So it kind of feels like literally Christmas in July that we're, we're getting that done. Thank you. Could you repeat, please, what is the part of the project cost that wasn't distributed properly?
It's called mobilization and it's, it lumps together a whole bunch of things. It sort of depends on how you put your bid together. But in this case, traffic control was one of the items. And that's, that's the one that caused the, adjusted the cost a little bit. Because Hillcrest, Lawson, and Highland have very little traffic control needs because they're just small local streets, whereas Mills is a major street and a higher traffic control need. That caused a few more, a little more expense on that road.
I see what you're saying. So if this isn't something that we necessarily could have predicted, it just, it came back, these were the streets that had higher traffic control costs, is that right?
Basically, yeah. So the the analysis that we showed at the June 15 meeting was the the pay items were split based out on on which streets they applied to, where those quantities were. And that's easy to do for feet of water main or curb or, you know, tons of asphalt. The mobilization, because it has so many things lumped into it, when we were splitting it up for that analysis, we didn't have all the details. And then in this process of working with Fonsen to reduce scope, they pointed that out that, you know, that more expenses on Mills.
Sure. So does mobilization, does that trend with the other repairs that we are seeing come in higher? Like I think you said at one point, utilities were an increased cost when doing this type of project. Does mobilization follow that pattern or it's, it's a different, it's a different pattern?
We didn't analyze mobilization costs, whether they're, they're high or low right now. They do tend to track with construction cost. So a high-dollar project is going to have a higher mobilization cost.
Okay. Thank you. Your Honor, those are all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember CO, any questions or comments?
No questions, Your Honor.
Okay. Councilmember Kamara Sulaq.
Just one question regarding the other streets, Highland, Hillcrest, and Lawson. So will those be a main priority for next construction season?
Yeah. So, I mean, they're already designed, so it's very easy to put together a bid package. We'll be doing that. This time, we'll try the super early bid and try to get that on the books very early. We're also going to take a look at the CIP and streets that are coming up and see if it makes sense to get any of those into the same bid package or if we go Hillcrest, Lawson, and Highland as one project and then any additional streets for next year as separate projects. We haven't done that.
That sounds really reasonable. And I'm glad you, glad to hear you say that we'll look at getting those bids out early next year.
Yep.
So, thank you. That's the only, that's all that I have.
Very good. Well, we have, we have a motion on the floor moved by Mayor Pro Tem Gearbaugh, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon to simply acknowledge receipt. So we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of acknowledging receipt, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. How about a motion now to approve or not to approve and to authorize or not authorize?
Move to approve and to authorize.
Been moved again by Mayor Pro Tem Gearbaugh to approve and to authorize. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Del Orco. Discussion, first from the dais. Councilwoman Dillon.
Thank you. Mr. Fordice, I apologize. I had one last question that I forgot to ask. What is the timeframe for this project?
This will get going in the next couple of weeks and wrap up in...
October 16.
Okay. Is there any concern with closing Mills and that impacting the downtown street closures? Because Mills is sort of the detour route right now from the west.
So we'll have to take a look at that. But I think we've got enough traffic flow in there to make it work. Typically, the contractor will not be working on the weekends when when the closure isn't in place. So we can kind of button things up and make it easy flowing. And I think most folks are detouring McKay to Mills. And that's south of this construction zone.
Okay. But if you're coming from west, if you're coming east on Michigan, you would turn left onto, you turn north, sorry, I'm very directionally challenged. You turn north onto Mills. So is there a chance that that road would be closed at some point?
Not at that end.
But, but trucks would have to go the full route to Bennett.
Yeah. So we're, we're not planning a full closure, you know, certainly open to traffic. And we'll work on what, what we need to do with that closure. But I don't think it would, it certainly wouldn't make sense to delay this project further.
Oh, no, I wasn't implying delaying. I just was more concerned with coordinating.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We can, we can make that work.
Thank you.
Any other additional questions or, excuse me, comments from the dais? Well, let me just say I'm strongly in favor of the motion that Mr. Gearbaugh offered to approve and to authorize, you know, Mills, Watson, Whittier, and a portion of Nichols. They are in desperate need of attention. And I'm not just talking about the, the road surface, but also, as Mr. Fordice so eloquently indicated, also storm sewers, utilities, et cetera. The only thing that I would add is that I will be even more strident next year in my advocacy for getting work done on Highland Drive because I actually think Highland Drive is probably one of the most abysmal streets in the city of Saline. And the residents of Highland Drive deserve better. So that does need to be a priority for us during the construction season of 2021. And evidently, as does Lawson and Hillcrest, because I'm very familiar with the state of those streets as well. But happy to move forward. Something is better than nothing. And, you know, resurfacing these, these streets will be a, will produce tangible benefits, not only for the residents that live in that vicinity, but for the community as a whole. So again, strongly in favor of the motion. Additional comments from those who are participating remotely. Councilwoman Mitchell.
No, thank you, Your Honor. I'm all set.
Councilmember CO.
None, Your Honor.
Councilmember Kamara Sulaq.
No further comments. Thank you.
Okay. Then we have a motion on the floor moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Del Orco to approve and to authorize. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We go back now to new business item 20-100, award of CES for Mills, Watson, Whittier, and Nichols. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 1 memo from City Engineer DPW Director Fordice and to approve or not to approve the award of construction engineering survey and testing contract to 2020 street and utility projects, reduced scope, Mills, Watson, Whittier, and Nichols to Fleece Vanderbilt Brink in a not-to-exceed amount of $257,000.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Been moved by Mayor Pro Tem Gearbaugh to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Fordice, do you care to briefly comment on your memo of July 1?
Basically, repeat my comments on the first item and replace Woodland with Mills, Watson, Whittier, and Nichols.
Questions from the dais? Record will reflect, there are none. Questions from those participating remotely. Councilwoman Mitchell.
No, thank you.
Councilmember CO.
None, Your Honor.
Councilmember Kamara Sulaq.
None here, thank you.
Okay. Then if there's nothing further, we will proceed to vote. It's been properly moved by Gearbaugh, seconded by Dillon to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Mr. Fordice, you are dismissed. However, I would regret if I, if I didn't acknowledge this for the public record. My understanding is this is your last council meeting as the DPW Director, City Engineer. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. You'll obviously, as we discussed at a recent meeting, you'll be continuing on for six months as our City Engineer working remotely. We wish you and your family the very best on your move out west. And we thank you for, how many years with the city of Saline now?
Coming up on 19.
19. Well, thank you for, for nine, 19 years of exceptional service. We appreciate it. We know you'll be successful. And again, wish you the best on your move.
Thank you very much.
Yep. We now transition to our first new business item, which was removed from the consent agenda, which is item C-20-93. This will be a motion to approve appointments of staff and board commissions. Is there a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Okay. Moved by Gearbaugh to approve, seconded by Mitchell. Councilwoman Mitchell, I believe you had a question or comment.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. I just would like it, point it out for the the public that this is, I believe, the first time that we have not had the city engineer, starting in January, we do not have the city engineer on the planning commission. Is that right, Your Honor?
That's certainly true during my tenure. Mr. Gearbaugh's been around a little bit longer. I don't mean to put you on the spot. Do you recall a time in your tenure where the city engineer was not a, the, the official staff liaison under the planning commission?
I mean, it would have been Gary Rubel as the identified individual, so...
So probably subsequent to his hiring in 1987, there's been a, a in-person staff member who serves as the engineer as the liaison of the planning commission.
Correct.
Yeah. Okay.
And so since January, who has been filling that role for, for doing engineering work or talking during the meeting?
Well, Mr. Fordice, as the city engineer, still provides memos and analysis that are provided to the planning commission for their consideration when, when appropriate.
Okay. So does that include, does his time include attending the meeting or it's purely written analysis?
I think as of the last year, it's been exclusively written analysis. And he has debriefed Acting City Manager Green, who is the staff liaison on the issues, who usually speaks on his behalf.
Correct. And then they both worked with Doug Luhan from Carlisle-Wartman and...
Chris Atkins.
And Chris Atkins, sorry. I'm going way back on that one. Apologies. And then those two worked together in terms of any concerns that come across.
So I just wanted to, to check in because that's, that's a big change in a small town.
Indeed.
How, how is that going? What is your perception, Your Honor, of, of the difference, the way it was having the city engineer there, present, answering questions live?
I haven't noticed much of a significant change, either to the positive or negative. What's your perspective, Mayor Pro Tem Gearbaugh?
No, I think it's been, I'm trying to think if we had any concerns. The only issues that we've had are consistent with, there may be issues that need to be answered by the developer, to which they've got to go back and then they've got to bring them back to the city. I haven't heard anything where we've had to have staff go back and reevaluate. They've always worked directly with, with Carlisle-Wartman or the developer. So it's just been a different person presenting.
Yeah. I, I think that's well stated. As I think back of all of the projects and initiatives that have been presented to Planning Commission over the past 12 months, if there were deficiencies, I think in every case, it was the petitioner, the applicant, not staff.
Correct.
Yeah. Correct.
Right. I just, I work home, the majority of the planning commissions that I attended were during Gary Rubel's reign. So I just remember him talking a lot. And he always said good things to say and we got that input. So I just wondered, and then I guess, so my question, you mentioned Carlisle-Wartman. Have they always been at meetings as well as, is it Atkins?
It's Chris Atkins now. It was formerly Doug Luhan.
Right.
Yeah. And they're always at our meeting primarily because they're the ones that are reviewing it for us in terms of, of compliance with all the different coding and such that doesn't necessarily involve the engineer. It involves a doesn't necessarily involve the engineer. It involves a staff liaison that can interpret that information.
Got it. Okay.
I think I'm right on that, Mr. Mayor. Yeah.
Well, I'm really...
Yeah, I mean, there isn't, Kristen, there isn't any, I would say it's a little bit of a change. It's just getting used to a new individual and understanding change without Gary, because Gary was a longtime individual, and you have to expect some changes because that institutional knowledge and everything kind of went with him. But at this perspective, we've been operating fine, and I don't think we have any concerns, and the engineering information has been addressed appropriately.
Okay. And just to be, to let everybody know, I worked with Mr. Fordyce very happily on the Historic District Commission, and we had another move where somebody who, without an engineering background came aboard, and it's been fine for us too. But I just wanted to hear during the source how things were going. So I appreciate it. That's all I have.
Very good. If there's nothing further on this issue of staff appointments, there is a motion on the floor moved by Mayor Protam Girba, seconded by Mitchell, to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 20-102. This is City Manager Hiring Committee Contracting for City Manager Search. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 1 memo from Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Green, and to approve or not to approve the recommendation to engage with Walsh Municipal Services in the amount of $12,800.
I'll move to acknowledge receipt.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. And I actually believe, if I'm not mistaken, I might be looking at an old agenda. I think there's some additional verbiage that's supposed to be included in this motion. Am I correct on that, Clerk Royal? Terry, are you with us?
I am with us.
Okay. I think, if I recall correctly, you and I revised this motion maybe last Wednesday, or it was last Wednesday before the agenda went out. Perhaps I'm looking at an old copy.
You are.
Okay. So right now, we just have a motion to acknowledge receipt, but for the council's benefit and the public's benefit, can you read the full motion that was revised?
Okay. It was to acknowledge receipt of the July 1, 2020 memo from Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Green, and the June 30, 2020 memo from Mayor Morrow, to approve the recommendation to engage with Walsh Municipal Services LLC in the amount of $12,800, and to approve Mayor Morrow's appointments to the City Manager Hiring Committee as submitted.
Okay, very good. Everyone clear on that motion, Mr. Girba and Councilwoman Dillon? Since you were the movers and seconds, are you willing to acknowledge receipt of, are you willing to still offer a motion to acknowledge receipt of Mr. Green's memo as well as my memo of June 30?
Yes.
Okay, very good. My apologies. Mr. Green, would you like to begin by talking a little bit about Walsh Municipal Services?
Yes, sir. So as laid out in the memo I sent to you guys, in light of Mr. Campbell's recent resignation, it's our opinion that we should engage in a third party to assist us with this manager search. Staff, including myself and a couple others I've roped in, we reached out to six search firms that we know have a history of working in Michigan for municipal executive searches. After reviewing all proposals, it's my recommendation to engage with Walsh Municipal Services based on their costs, their history as an actual manager in Michigan, so they will have an understanding of what we are looking for, and then just their history of success in the city. So I also have Mr. Frank Walsh on the Zoom call to answer any additional questions you may have regarding his proposal. But I guess we can open up for questions.
Very good. And let me just add that my memo outlines the members who will serve on the search committee and outlines what I believe their responsibilities ought to be. I'm very pleased with how that hiring committee came together. As enumerated in my memo, Councilwoman Dillon would serve as chair, along with Councilmembers Kamara Sulek and CEO. Chief Hart would represent staff, and then we would have Cheryl Sidell, who presented earlier on behalf of the Road Commission, who's Managing Director of the Road Commission and also a city resident. And I reached out to my counterpart at the city of Chelsea, spoke to Melissa Johnson, the mayor, and then subsequently had a conversation or exchanged emails, rather, with John Hanifin, their city manager, and I think his perspective will enrich the process, serving as a city manager in a community that's comparable to Saline in so many ways. So happy to address questions regarding my memo, but as the Acting City Manager said, he's also free to address or would like to address your questions and concerns, and we do have the gentleman from Walsh Consulting on the line, too, if you have questions for the proposed consultant. Mr. Girba, can I begin with you?
I really don't have many questions from the fact that I'm glad that we have a number of, number of considerations that we can choose from. For Mr. Walsh, could you provide me an understanding of what do you see as potential concerns for us as we move forward to try and recruit someone at this current time due to the pandemic, the state of the economy, and everything else?
You know, that's a, thank you. First of all, thank you for having me this evening. It's a real pleasure. I grew up by Saline, and I have a real affinity for your community. That's a really great question, and it comes up in every search that I do. All I can tell you is that I've been surprised by the responses that I've had in my last couple of searches during COVID. I'm currently doing this search for a community very similar, I think, to Saline, Ada Township, the home of Amway over by Grand Rapids. We have, I don't know the last time in Michigan, that 10 city managers applied for a position. That's unheard of in Michigan. There's just not a lot of movement going on, but we have a strong, strong list of candidates that'll be going in front of the Ada Board in a couple of weeks. So as much as it might be as a surprise, I've seen in my last two searches, actually a lot of interest during COVID, and I can't explain why that is. It's actually been a surprise to me as well.
For us, what, and I'm looking at your list of your calendar and so forth going forward, what's your feeling in terms of an acceptable timeline for us to recruit? Do you feel that we can have someone in place by October?
I do. I do. You know, there's a lot of steps in order to get there, and I'd be working with the Hiring Committee chaired by Ms. Dillon, and working with that committee. And I understand that the mission is to bring a group of no more than four to the Board. I do think that we can get that accomplished. I've done a lot of research already. I've watched probably 10 hours of video on your meetings and what's going on in the community. And, you know, the challenges are the NPS permit, you know, at the wastewater plant, it's 1.8 million gallons per day, and you had a couple days in January where it was five and just over 5 million gallons per day, and I think the other one was like over 3 million. I have to, I have to get to know your community really, really well, because my job is to go out and sell your community to candidates in Michigan and beyond Michigan. You know, your infrastructure, your unfunded liabilities. But I will tell you that your budget that you recently went through, still maintaining a 20% fund balance in COVID and taking into account next year's potential losses, you're in a really good shape and better than most when it comes to that 20%.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's going to be a very attractive approach to a city manager, I mean, I think. I had one other question, and, oh, at this current time, how many searches are you working on?
So I'm working on, right now, I have one that's in stage, they're all in stages. I have one that's in stage four. They're interviewing next week. I have two that are in stage two. The actual recruitment is going on right now and would be completed by the time we get into recruiting. We will not be recruiting for Saline for another month. It would be approximately, we would go after you interview stakeholders, the council develop the profile. It's about four weeks. So we wouldn't be going live with recruitment until the first or second week in August. And so therefore, you'll be the only search I have at that time when the recruitment begins. Although I can tell you, I ran into a city manager today who was asking me, what cities, what communities are out there where Saline's not really publicly out there yet? And I said, well, I'm hoping to be able to do Saline. It's close to my heart. And he said, wow, being next to Ann Arbor, that'll be, that'll be a lot of attraction. I said, you know what? I look at it differently. I look at Ann Arbor being next to Saline. There's a lot of people who want that small-town charm and not the big-city life, and that'll be one of the challenges for the new manager. How do you grow your tax base and still maintain your small-town charm?
And I think for us, one of the concerns is knowing that we have such a diverse amount of activities and expectations from our businesses and commercial and industrial and from our residents that the qualified individual will need to be able to handle all those situations.
Absolutely. Yeah.
I believe that's it. Oh, one other question. Staffing-wise, do you have additional support that helps you, or are you just the one-man shop?
I actually have support staff that helps me, and then I have eight managers throughout the state, different locations, different regions, who actually assist me in helping me spread the word and the recruitment, and it's worked really, really well. I hope that you'll take the time to talk to any of my clients in the last 23 years. We've had a lot of success with our small, little firm.
Great. Thank you. That's it for me, Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Dillon or Councilmember Del Orco, any questions? Start with Janet.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. I do have a couple of questions for you. As far as placement, do you have a passive or a direct approach? I think you just talked about having some managers that do make some contacts and reach out, but do you also have a network of your own, or are you relying on third-party services like MML and city manager network?
Yeah. Well, in today's environment, that's a really good question. That doesn't get asked often, but you can't be passive. You can't just put out an ad and hope people apply. I do a thing called a Sunday blitz, and the Sunday before the final day, I have a list, and I'm sure Mr. Green has received these before. I blitz 85 managers the Sunday night before the closing, and I, again, here's Saline, great community. Here's what's wonderful about it. Rated in the top 70 communities of the nation, the schools, the downtown, the festival, clean, safe community, your rec center. I go through it all and sell Saline. That's my job. I have to become your biggest cheerleader. I am very passionate about what I do, and you can expect an all-out effort. And if you talk to any of my former clients, you'll see. That's why I've been hired two, three, four times by the same community. It's a lot of, it's a lot of work, but it's a lot of passion, and you can expect a rigorous recruitment for Saline. You never take, you've got a great community, but I can't take that for granted and just sit back and hope people apply.
Thank you. Then, do you also recruit out of state or just particularly in-state of Michigan?
I do both. In fact, well, the first stage of the process is, because most communities prefer Michigan candidate. They know the folks at Lansing. They have connections. They've managed here before. They have established relationships. But we do, in fact, two of the last five searches that I've done have resulted in out-of-state recruitments. In fact, Mr. Green was recruited from North Carolina, and another gentleman was recruited from South or North Carolina a couple years ago. We extend beyond the state, but I find most Michigan communities want to have that Michigan experience. But in my last search in Ada, we had probably 15 candidates from out-of-state. They chose to prefer to go with Michigan candidates.
Okay. My other, my next question is, are you comfortable with the tax, the tasks, excuse me, beyond the recruiting? We've talked about creating job description and employment contract and those aspects of it.
I do. I do all that, and I'm comfortable with it. I've been doing it for a couple of decades. But I can tell you, I'll be, the worst part of a recruitment is the contract. And typically, I tell the elected officials, let me be the buffer. It's a lot of work, but let me be your buffer between the candidate and the council. You don't want the council to be, or the hiring committee. It's better to have the consultant, whoever you go with, make them work and be the go-between, between the candidate and the council, because otherwise it can get off to a rough start if you're doing that yourself. It's all included in my proposal, as well as the background check, the cost of the ads, and all of that is borne by my firm.
Okay. And do you offer any guarantee of your placements?
I do. And knock on something, I've never had to use that in the history of my company. Probably shouldn't have said that. But anyway, yeah, we do offer a one-year guarantee. If the individual leaves, within that first year, we come back and we would do the search all over again at no cost.
Okay.
Again, that's, that has never happened, and in 23 years, I've only had to redo, when we went through the whole search process, we weren't able, the community was not able to come to contractual terms with the person they chose. So we redid the search right away, and within three weeks, we had a candidate sign. But yes, yes on the job description, Councilwoman Dillon, and yes on the contract.
Okay. I appreciate that. And I know that in your timeframe, we're talking about the 11-week window. Do you feel that's too aggressive? Do you feel that the market supports that right now?
I do. As a matter of fact, I believe, I keep pretty close tabs, being a manager of a Michigan community. And I've been a city manager for 23 years and a township manager for seven, so I've been in the business for 30 years. I keep, I know most everyone in the state, because I'm very active at our state association. And that's one of the benefits, I think, of hiring me. Not only do I know who you might want, I might know who you don't want when people apply as well. I've known people for, you know, I have established relationships with a number of people. And so that's, you know, one of the benefits, I think, of going forward.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Del Orco, any questions for our guest? Or, I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh, did you want to continue?
I just want to tell Councilwoman Dillon, if selected, I look forward to working with you, and you will have very open communication with me. You might even get tired of hearing from me.
Thank you very much.
Councilmember Del Orco, any questions for either myself, the Acting City Manager, or our guest?
Thank you. I just wanted to speak to this idea to Mr. Walsh about hiring Michigan candidates. I feel like the main reason a number of communities might feel they want to lean in favor of a Michigan candidate is because there are particular challenges to working in the state of Michigan with restrictive rules regarding tax structure, our authorities to implement taxes, the state funding structure. I think if we were to bring somebody from out-of-state, there might be particular hurdles for them to overcome in thinking that they could exercise the same tools they would need in their states, where coming here, there would be a different set of rules to follow. One of the advantages, I feel, moving forward with a smaller company is that you can tailor-fit the approach in vetting the candidates and recruiting the candidates as well. And I just wanted to get your sense of how much effort and energy you would expect to expand on, or expend looking for out-of-state candidates.
I would expend an effort on that. I have connections in a number of states, and I reach out to people that I know. I went out of college and grad school in 1990. I worked in Colorado. So I have connections in different states. I went to grad school in Ohio. So I do have connections throughout the country that I do bring in. But most of the time, I feel, what I find from elected officials is, we want somebody who knows about the Michigan Brownfield law. We want somebody who knows about PA 197. We want somebody who knows about Eagle and what used to be the DEQ. And all of those things are very, it's a long, a large learning curve for people who have not worked in Michigan. And when you select a candidate, typically elected officials want that, what they're getting in a candidate in Michigan are those established relationships and knowledge, so they're not starting three steps back from a Michigan candidate.
Right, right. So just on a personal level, is this your full-time job, or are you still serving in the capacity as a township manager? I'm just wondering about time commitment.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I do have, I'm the Meridian Township Manager, which is a community of about 45,000. We're right next to the state capitol. And I can tell you that I've handled my job, and I have the full support of the Township Board that I work for to do searches. It's in my contract. And they've never noticed a difference. It's my hobby. It's what I do on evenings and weekends. I've handled four searches at one time before. And I can tell you, I would invite you to call any client I've ever worked with, and what you'll find is passion, hard work, diligent, communication. And if you go to my website, there's a lot of quotes from different elected officials that I've worked with. And we run a pretty successful operation. I think it's because I have a great passion for doing this, it works out very well for both myself and the, and the community.
And last question, Mr. Walsh. With respect to the contract negotiations, are you open and willing to work with HR consultant to hammer out any details or hiccups that we would encounter in negotiating that process?
Of course, yes. As a matter of fact, before we even get to the contract stage, I would need to get feed- I would need to get feedback from the hiring committee, city council members. I just don't go in and say, hey, what, you know, what do you want? And I'll take you back to the council. There has to be some guidelines. And I do, I do, with each community, I do present what it's going to take based on the community to attract salary-wise, what it's going to, what you're going to, what range you're looking at to try to attract the talent that you want. And most of the time, the communities are right there and agree, you know, this is what we need to do. We want to attract talent. And yeah, I work, I work very closely with the, with the elected officials and in this case, the hiring committee. I think Chair Dillon and I would have a lot of conversations before I even talked to the preferred candidate. The offer should be coming from the city council, not from Walsh Municipal Services.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. That's all I have for now.
Thank you. Transitioning now to the folks who are participating remotely. Councilwoman Mitchell, any questions?
I don't. I appreciate you, Mr. Walsh. I appreciate your track record and, and your presentation tonight. I have full confidence and I'll be supporting the motion.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember CO, any questions or comments?
No, all the questions that I had have been asked. I look very much look forward to working with you, Mr. Walsh.
Thank you.
And Mr. Kamara Sulek.
Yes, I just have a couple of quick things. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. You'll let us know if you decide to come out of retirement or change jobs. I like all the experience that you have. Can you tell me how you would address any negative aspects of Celine to a prospective candidate? Obviously, we've made the news in the past and no, no community is perfect. So how would you, how would you handle that?
That's a good and tough question. I deal with things head-on. I don't sugarcoat the situation. I think, I invite people, one of the first question a candidate will ask is the relationship among the city council. And that's something that I'm going to have to work with and work with the candidates. They need to know what they're getting into. But I prefer to talk about all the positive things, although there will be negative things. They need to know about your NPDS permit and the wastewater challenges and, and the maximum flows that you're having there. That's the amount of detail I need to be able to sell your community. When I, I hope you don't take the word "sell," to try to get people very, very interested in Celine. I've already talked to a couple of candidates about Celine and a couple of issues have come up. But again, I, I don't think we try to sell this community as this community next door to the University of Michigan, et cetera, et cetera. You are, this is a strong, small-time charm, lots of great things about it. How many communities of 9,000 are ranked in the top 70 in the United States as a place to live? We got to get out there and make sure people know, sir, there's a, a comment that was made about diversity a few months ago. That's happening all over the place and I applaud your efforts with diversity and inclusion and to Chief Hart. We, three years ago, started doing something that was unheard of. We started sponsoring candidates to increase diversity among our police force and it's been a huge success for us and I applaud you for going in this. Those are the kind of details, if you really, really have passion about being a recruiter, you get to know the community better than some people who live there. And that's what you have to do to be able to sell it to all the candidates. They need to know that you're sponsoring candidates potentially to go into your police department. A lot of communities won't do that. So those are the kind of things that you overcome. Every community has a set of negative issues, but you push hard on the positives. There's way too many issues or positives about Celine not to sell it.
All right. Very, very good answer. I, I completely agree. I do think we have a lot of strong points and advantages to come here and work. Last question would be, your, your proposal is head and shoulders, the most competitive. What is it that you're, that you do differently aside from the hands, the hands-on and your, your passion and your energy and being involved in these, in cities and in townships and having all those relationships? What is the, what is the difference of why are the others charging significantly more? And I have no problem with what you're charging, don't get me wrong, but, you know, just when you look at, when you look at the numbers and you go, wow, that almost too good to be true. So I would be remiss if I, I didn't ask.
Sure. And if you look at the, the cost and then if you take off the cost I'm paying for the background check and the cost to place the ads and then when you take the tax rate out of it, so there's not a lot left. The reason, probably my cost, is because I'm a much, I'm a small, very small firm. I do it more as a passionate thing and a hobby because I love doing it. And I know almost everyone in Michigan, so I can sort out the people you might want and maybe not want, and I can help you get through that. I think the big thing is maybe the overhead that the large firms have that I don't have. And it's not a, I, it's not an income, a huge income generating thing for me once you take off all my costs. I just happen, I have to tell you, it is what I really enjoy doing. And I've been doing it for a long time. I want to continue doing it.
All right. I, I appreciate, I appreciate that. That, that makes, that makes sense. You've answered my questions and thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I'll be supporting the measure.
Very good. Thank you all. We do have a motion on the floor. I have the revised language now, excuse me. We do have a motion on the floor moved by Mayor Potem Gierba, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon to acknowledge receipt of the July 1st, 2020 memo from city manager, acting city manager, Community Development Director Mike Green, and the June 30th, 2020 memo from Mayor Marl. If there's nothing further on that motion, we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously and the subsequent motion will be a motion to approve or not to approve the recommendation to engage the Walsh Municipal Services LLC in the amount of $12,800 and to approve Mayor Marl's appointments to the city manager hiring committee as submitted.
Move to approve and approve.
Let CO be the mover and Gierba be the second. Any additional discussion on the motion? Mr. Gierba?
No.
Anything else for the dais?
No, I'm just looking forward to working with Mr. Walsh.
Okay, very good. Those participating remotely, Councilwoman Mitchell, anything you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Mr. CO?
Oh, thank you, sir.
Mr. Kamara Sulek?
I'm good, thank you.
Excellent. Okay. Then we'll proceed to vote. All those in favor of approving, say aye.
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 Post say nay. Ayes have it, the motion carries unanimously. Mr. Walsh, thank you for your time. We look forward to working with you. We'll be in touch very soon.
Thank you very much.
Yep, have a wonderful evening.
You too.
We move on to new business item 20-103. This is Human Resources Manager. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 1st, 2020 memo from Assistant City Manager, Community Development Director Green and to approve or not to approve the recommendation to engage Sage Solutions for a Human Resources Manager in the amount of $62,031.
I will move to acknowledge and approve.
Do you want to second that, Councilwoman Dillon?
No, I'd like to just acknowledge at this point.
Okay, I let her, I'll let her be the mover then. Mitchell moved to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second to that motion? I'll second.
I'll second.
Okay. I'll second. I'll get you on the next one, Mr. Kamara Sulek. Sorry about that. It's been moved by Mitchell, seconded by Marl to acknowledge and to approve. Mr. Green, would you care to discuss your memo of July 1? And I believe we have at least one guest on the line as well.
Yes, sir. So as outlined in the NOVAC report that we've all been discussing for a while now, there is a need for a human resources element and some capacity here in the city. During your budget discussions, you discussed bringing on someone full-time as just an individual HR manager. However, recent discussions have led to us exploring the option of just a consultant for probably the next year. It's my recommendation that we do go with a consultant for the next year as it's my belief it would be a good idea to get the kinks worked out with the HR so we understand exactly what we need from that for our city. And then as a bonus, Sage Solutions will offer to help train the new HR manager once, if we do decide to go that route in the future. I do have Heidi Rice and Sherry McDaniel on the Zoom call with us to answer any specific questions from you guys. And as you guys know, of course, Sage Consultant did recently complete our compensation study that we'll talk about at our next meetings.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Green. Ms. Rice, remind me of your colleague's name. Make sure they're unmuted.
Her name is Sherry McDaniel. Thank you.
Wonderful. Heidi, it's good to put a face with a name. It was good talking to you about three weeks back. And more importantly, I'm so glad that you took some of my time to pitch me on this idea of the Sage Group providing HR managerial services on a contractual basis. You know, as I, as I expressed subsequently to my colleagues, you were very emphatic and direct and very confident that Sage could provide us with a service and product that would benefit our, our organization. So thank you for that.
I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you as well.
Very good. Would you like to maybe give a brief overview and then we'll open it up for questions for both yourself, your colleague, and our assistant city manager?
Absolutely. We provided the city of Celine a proposal, understanding, having worked with you guys with the compensation analysis, we got a good feel for what you need and what you have here at the city of Celine. And we, we know that we could save you significant amounts of money. And the reason we can do that is we have every layer of HR services that an organization of your size needs. If you only go with a human resources manager, you don't get the breadth of services that you need. So the way we go about the services when, when it's all-encompassing is we provide the, the HR manager or HR generalist, people use different terms, onsite at the level of services that you need. So if you don't need somebody for 40 hours a week because you already have the assistant doing a lot of the HR work, there's no reason to hire more, more, you know, more bandwidth than you need. By going with Sage, what you get is, is the amount that you need in terms of somebody sitting at the city of Celine where employees get to know that person. It's not a different person, it's the same person. It's, it's your HR person. And then when there's situations that require maybe a higher level, a director level, or an executive level, our HR generalists know their lane and they know when to call us over here at the mothership. So we have the, you have the availability of a director at all times, but you're not paying for a director at all times. You pay when you need our services. So when you combine the amount of time that you need just for the HR generalist with the availability of having director and executive, executive level HR knowledge right at your fingertips, we, we feel like we can really save you. And if, I don't know if you have the proposal in front of you, but if we looked at a HR director, because we believe that's really the high level that you really need, not necessarily an HR manager. When you, when you look at that, the, the full breadth of the pricing, the acquisition, with the benefits and everything, the comparison between what we provide and what that person provide, provides, it's, it's a $200,000 difference over three years. So I, I feel very strongly, as the mayor said, that we can provide those services. We have the breadth, we have the knowledge, but we can certainly save a municipality a lot of money at a time where everybody's, you know, looking at budget shortfalls because of COVID and all those other things.
Very good. Excellent. We appreciate that, Heidi. We'll open it up for questions, starting with the dais. Anybody on the dais have a question for either the assistant city manager or our guest from Sage? Mr. Gierba, please.
I'm glad that you brought forward this proposal because I think this is what I really had supported previously, knowing that having one individual is a concern from a perspective of having the best sources and resources. And I believe your firm can provide us with that. Can you briefly describe, currently we have a clerk that, I misspoke, an administrative assistant that handles a lot of the HR aspects. You will be taking over those aspects or do you think you're being coordinating with someone here at that time? I need a clarification of how you actually would handle what is currently being done.
Sure. So what we would do is we would work with the, the team and partner. So determine what is needed, what, what should the administrative assistant keep and what should they give up? Our team is well-versed in anything from payroll to benefits to, to day-in, day-out compliance. You know, we're, we're not, you know, municipality level, compliance with big, with big vehicles and trucks and whatnot, maybe not quite there. But the day-in, day-out compliance, OSHA, and any kind of basic safety information, they can provide, any type of regulatory information they can provide. If there's a, a basic investigation, basic concern, I'm sad, I'm glad, I'm mad, whatever that might be, they're there. And when they're not there, they're still available. What we'd like to do is to develop an email system where even if they're not onsite, they are still available and they're still your person. So you still get the answer from them. And if for some reason they're on vacation, then another member of my team, because what we do is we partner a director with a manager. And so a director is always known to your group as well. And so that director will fill in at any given time, should that manager not be there. Or if there is something big and unfortunate that occurs, an investigation that's out-larmed, it needs to take place, then seamlessly that director who already knows you steps in place, works in tandem with the manager, and they get it done. So that was a long answer to say, whatever is best and whatever makes the most sense, we will do because we want to customize your HR experience with us to really suit your needs.
Yes, because I know that's one of our concerns is understanding that. And for me, it's making sure however your operation would be incorporated into us, is that it works well with the city manager and actually works well with currently just the interim manager, but also to understand that the individuals that would report to you have to work in coordination, I mean, not report to you, but that work with you are working in coordination with the city manager so that the information is being appropriately shared and not necessarily being directed to other parties and so forth.
You're right. So, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, please.
Is we learn our lane. So we understand who we should be communicating with and what, and what is considered confidential. And, you know, there, there are certain things that can only go to a certain individual or there's other things that have to go to a larger group. So we work that out right at the beginning. We have what's called a kickoff and we hammer out all the details. We look at the entire, another first thing that we'll do is audit. We need to know where you stand, you know, and what's really done well and what isn't done so well. And so then we develop this list of, okay, here's what really needs to get done. This sets it up so that if in the future you decide to hire an HR person, it's, they're starting off clean. And the, and the information is clean, everything is in compliance, and so they're starting off really well. Another piece to it is, is if you want your admin assistant to learn more about HR and become competent, it's, it's a trend that I'm seeing a lot more. Because what's happening is, is that HR people aren't always great. I hate to say it. We're not always great at HR. That's why it, it takes me a lot of time to hire the right people and to train them. But we're always not great people, people, either, which is unfortunate. And so what a lot of companies that I'm finding are doing is they are hiring great people, people, that don't know HR. Because they want that, that skill set before they want anything else. So what, what my team will do is come in and teach HR and ensure a level of competency in HR. And so that's where that partnership begins to form. So if you say, well, I really would like, you know, this done by, great, we'll teach them. And we'll audit and we'll make certain things correct. And we'll all understand our lanes and we'll develop job descriptions consistent with who's doing what. And we will, we'll communicate it out to the group so that nobody is in confusion. And again, we run, we like to run seamlessly. So if we are not there onsite and there's a problem, A, we can either get there onsite to be there in person, or B, we're just a phone call or an email away if we happen to not be there.
And then just the last question. We currently have a labor attorney. And then just the last question. We currently have a labor attorney, which does most of our contract negotiating for, does all of it, I would say, but also has handled a number of our other aspects. Would you continue to coordinate with this individual, or would you be doing a lot of what we used to have them review, be doing it for us instead?
Sure. If it is something that I feel, if it's to that level, the HR manager generalist should be contacting the director directly. And then what we do is we work in concert with the leadership team, where if I think that, hey, this one is really, could go south on you, let's get council involved, then we'll do so. But what we like to do is kind of wrap it up and put a bow on it, so that you don't have, you're not paying an attorney to say, okay, now go here and talk to that person, and talk to that person, and let me see what this is. We will anticipate what their needs are, we'll get it all done, and then we're going to hand it to them and say, okay, put your eyes on it, this is what we think, do you agree or disagree? So that it's not, you know, a 20-hour bill, right? It's a two-hour bill.
Excellent.
And usually I can tell you in advance, this is about a 35-minute or 40-minute problem with an attorney. And I'm usually pretty right on.
Great. That's helpful, because that's the one thing I want to make sure that, from the benefit of a UOL, will be serving as first and second-tier approaches for any disciplinary or aspects. And then if we have to draw in further assistance, that's the cost saving is using UOL versus an attorney. With that, I'm done.
Very good. Additional questions from the DAAS? Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. Can you remind me, where are you located?
We're in Lubbock, Michigan.
Okay. Thank you. So, just to clarify, we would be assigned an individual. So, we would have a point of contact, that would be the person in which our staff would connect with. It would always be that person unless they were unavailable, and then they'd move. Okay. I do like that aspect of not having a dial-in number where you're just getting whoever's answering the phone that day.
We will never do that.
Okay. I have a couple of questions, and I guess I wanted to know, would you be involved in our employee hiring aspects at this point? And if so, how does that fit into your cost structure? Because for those people that don't have a packet in front of them that are viewing, this is a very à la carte style. It's more of an hourly thing. And so, I want to make sure that we're looking at the big picture as far as cost savings, because there are some things that we didn't talk about. One is, you know, the hours related to employee hiring, union contract negotiations, things like that. Those are going to be significant hours and dollars. And so, I just wanted to see if you would be engaged in those and how they are addressed.
Absolutely. So, what we typically do is our onsite HR manager will assist in the sourcing and onboarding process of your new employees. Now, should you have something as substantial as, you know, a city manager position, you might still want to outsource that. And by the way, that was, that's
Very impressive.
Yeah, it's very impressive, and it's a fantastic price. I would have hired him in a heartbeat. So, that would be a discussion where, is this really outside of the force and scope, and would you be better served, particularly with that gentleman at his price? Because I've not seen as good quality as what he's talking about here, and I'm confident he's going to deliver, as I can tell his confidence. I think he's already got it partially wrapped up for you. And I can, and his price is just unbelievable. So, when I say sourcing, it's we can assist in placing ads, we can assist with really the development of the phone screens, we can conduct those phone screens to knock those candidates down, or whatever your process might be that you choose to do. We can set up interviews. Our decisions won't come with, you know, or the final candidates are yours to decide and yours to pick. Once you pick final candidates, we'll go through whatever screening processes that you would choose to do. I have found that sometimes they're not set up in order, and we'll assist you in doing that correctly. So, everything flows correctly and in line with legal guidelines. And then we'll assist in onboarding. So, a lot of it will be done. A lot of it can be done within this. If you choose to go over, like say, for example, you have several positions that you need to fill because it's summer and whatnot, we can talk about that as a small out-of-scope. And again, it's just still at the generalist rates, unless you choose us as a headhunter, similar to what you just voted on.
Okay. Because I do see that on your services and fees chart, it does talk about talent acquisition, and there is a 20%
Yeah.
fee for that, based off the salary
Yes.
for that employee. So, those could become significant dollars very quickly.
Yeah. And that's what you just hired the headhunter for. And this person isn't headhunting, they're sourcing. So, they're placing ads, they're not saying, I've got two fantastic candidates for you. You could give them a job rack, just like any HR person would do, within their force and scope. You give them that job rack, you say, hey, let's get some ads out there, let's pull in the summer help, or, you know, the kids camp, or this, or the that. Here's our screen, you know, we want to make certain that all these four things are contained within that person. And the final decision-maker is Joe, schedule, you know, 20 interviews a day with Joe. And they will do all of that for you while onsite. Or, like I said, if the job is too big for the amount of onsite hours, then we can either add more onsite hours, or do it back here on the backend for you. So, it would be a minor change in the weekly scope for that one small project. If it's a city manager, a high-level or difficult position to fill, then we need to talk about, let's hire, what was his name?
Ms. Wall.
Let's hire Mr. Walsh.
Okay. Well, I appreciate that. One other question for you, on your services and fees, there's a human resources starter kit.
Yes.
What exactly is that?
So, a starter kit is if you have, if you are a brand-new entity per se, and you don't have a handbook, and you don't have job descriptions developed, and you don't have simple procedures in place, we will get you right out the door, basic human resource compliance, tailored to you, and ready to go. And sometimes people hire us just to do that, and they say, I got it from here.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mayor, I have one other question. I think it's probably for you, and it has to do with the administrative assistant position, because it sounds like that employee currently would keep their current HR duties. So, but haven't we already talked about that individual being reassigned because she wouldn't have those duties, and so she's already somebody else in a different area?
Yeah, that was one of my questions, was trying to understand the coordination.
So, I guess trying to figure out, what are we doing with that?
If we are all in, we're happy to assume all of those duties and be all in. It's what really is the true
Yeah. And staff, specifically the acting city manager and the city clerk can correct me if I'm wrong. So, the way I read the proposal from Sage is they would be assuming a bulk of the HR responsibilities if this contract were approved. L. Getzmann, who serves as our administrative assistant, who does probably 90 to 100% of the HR functions now, would still assist and support. But this would, hiring Sage or hiring any outside consultant would free up a significant portion of her time. So, the theory was that some of the responsibilities and assignments from the clerk's office would be transferred over to her. Is that, am I incorrect, Acting City Manager Green or Clerk Royal, or is that, is my assumption accurate?
I believe you guys did discuss that. I don't think anything official was ever decided from council or staff, but that is how I read it, where if Sage was brought in, L. would keep part of her HR function while Sage takes on the majority of the rest, then we would find other tasks for L. to do.
And I think what we had discussed is perhaps leaving the position of the assistant clerk vacant and moving some of those responsibilities over to Ms. Getzmann.
I believe so.
Clerk Royal, do you care to elaborate any, or did the acting city manager, between the acting city manager and myself, did we sum it up pretty well?
That is what we had discussed doing. However, if at some point we did need to hire somebody for a part-time position for the assistant clerk for, like, during the election time, we would look at something like that, maybe like an intern, or like they do for summer help with the DPW. But at this point, we were trying to leave the assistant clerk position vacant.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. So, just for my own clarification, then, currently, the administrative assistant would continue her HR duties that she is doing now, her benefits and such. She would still support whatever city manager is brought on, or the interim city manager at this point. She would support your office.
Some
She is essentially staying as is. But I guess I'm just unclear, because I thought we've already reassigned her some other tasks.
No, I think it, I think once Sage or another entity is brought on, a number of those HR responsibilities will transition to the new firm, i.e. the manager. L. will still be in a position to support and to assist, but the majority of those functions would be provided by an independent third party, thus freeing up a significant amount of her time and thereby transferring some of those responsibilities that were formerly assumed by the assistant clerk to her.
Okay. Is that financially prudent, I guess? If you're paying her a salary to do that, then we're going to be paying a consultant an hourly fee to do it?
Which you vote?
I guess I'm just not sure how this is
You've eliminated the assistant clerk's position. You save money in the long run, right?
Okay.
And you're using expertise versus
Okay. It just seems like there's a bit of a hole there somewhere, and I just want to make sure that we don't have a gap. Thank you.
Yep. Mr. Delarco, any questions for our guests or the Assistant City Manager?
Yeah. For the Sage Group, in your letter, you state that you agree with the NOVAC's conclusion. So, I want to talk a little bit about what was said in the NOVAC report and your feelings about that. One of the constructive pieces of criticism offered was that we're an organization that needs to transition from being a transactional to becoming a strategic partner. I was wondering if you could offer your interpretations of what you think they're saying there, and how we might get to the point of being a transactional organization to a strategic partner.
Sure. And that's with expertise in human resource, and again, I hate that people. And how do you really, you know, you talked about diversity, you talked about issues and concerns as it relates to that. My team can help analyze and to work with you and to determine, say, for example, you have a manager that's struggling in that area, or you have some difficulty with an employee that just doesn't understand. We would then, with our expertise, we can do higher-level evaluations and become more of a strategic partner in really assisting that person to their highest and best value, and helping them to overcome certain hurdles that are standing in the way of success. So, we also are a group of executives that have worked in the operations side of business. So, we're not just standard HR consultants. We're not what we consider the stuffy ones that only understand, you know, your basics, ADA, FMLA, you know, we can put on a break picnic and that sort of thing. We really partner at an executive level to understand your organization, what it's all about, what its culture is, and to help you, if you're not quite there culturally, to get there. Or if you are, to help you to maintain it through partnering with your sourcing and recruitment strategies, with looking at strategies and evaluating, just kind of like we've already done. Like, we've done great wage surveys, right? Now, let's maintain it, let's keep it. And to make certain that we're well documented. So, it's a partner with you, A, to keep you away from a judge, to the extent possible, B, to have the most successful employees that you can, C, to understand and to really help your employees live your mission, vision, and values. And so, that's where it's not all transactional. Okay, we're going to file this paperwork, we're going to do this. We're going to truly listen and determine. We can help, you know, in so many other areas. And that's why when you see in this, the proposal, you see a fair amount of 10 hours a month of advisory services. That's what that gets you, is that higher-level thought process. It's not, I've got, you know, poor employees that want leave of absence, I've got to process paperwork. I've got poor employees that are requesting leave of absence, how does that impact other areas? What other areas of law do I need to worry about? It's not just about that person's leave of absence. It's about, do they qualify for FMLA, PMLA, ADA? So, it's this marriage of all human resources. And how do we handle that, or how does that impact the departments? So, do we need to strategically plan, and do we need to work with you on how do we fill that gap, because we've got X number of people leaving? So, it's, there's where transactions, yeah, we got that coming and going. But what do we do because we have this, we recognize this gap? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think I get what you're saying. One other point they highlighted in their report was that they view the HR team as a keeper of the culture in an organization. And I'm wondering how we can accomplish the keeper of the culture aspect through an outsourced service?
Yes. Very good question. One of the things that we do is we stay involved. And I'd love to give you some of our references where most of my customers and most of all of our employees' customers will say, gosh, I really only think that I'm your only client, that you're my HR person, because we want to get to know everybody. And we need to get to know everybody. We are your partner. We're there with you through good and bad. And we want to be that individual that is, can celebrate the successes, and also, you know, go back and look at the failures, and really do a great evaluation of what happened there, so that we can prevent it. So, that's where that keeper of the culture is. And the other thing that we do is we will have those difficult conversations with those. We don't fear them. You need to be able to, you need to create a culture where you welcome them, because sometimes difficult conversations are needed. And people need to learn, and we will develop and we'll work with you a system that really is for feedback. You know, you need to get a lot of great feedback. That is what truly develops good culture, especially with younger generations, is a lot of positive. You've got Heidi over here, who is certified in emotional intelligence. So, she really can support engagement in that higher level of, you know, how should, when an employee does this, and the manager reacts this way, you know, where are we at on the spectrum? What do we need to do so that when an employee behaves like this, the manager reacts like that? And so, we create this culture of one of the support of each other that provides feedback, that provides enough positive feedback, so that when the negative stuff has to come, it's well-accepted and received and acted upon. And so, that's how we will help to really promote your mission, vision, and values, is through that dialogue and through those critical and crucial conversations that need to be had. And that's why you've got a lot of your higher level of support that need to be had. And that's why you've got a lot of your higher level of support built right into this contract. The transactional, 90, I'd say about 80% of the HR generalist manager will handle transactional, and then they'll do a fair amount of really great work on the cultural side as well. And then they know when to say, hey, we need a little bit of help here. They're great at what they do, they love what they do, they're very proud of what they do, and we promote education of our own team on a weekly basis.
Okay, great. Thank you. That's all I have.
Very good. Transitioning now to the council members who are participating remotely. Councilwoman Mitchell, any questions or comments for our guests or the assistant city manager?
I do. Thank you, Your Honor. First of all, thank you so much. I have a master's degree in health administration with a focus on organizational development, and I have, over the years, felt a stronger and stronger need for a higher level HR president. So I am thrilled to talk to you. I do have some questions for you. I think one of the issues that we have, we are a policy body, but we get pulled into operational decisions. And I think you saw that just a few minutes ago when there was talk about, well, what about this job flow? What about this employee? Well, I thought this was happening. And I feel most comfortable leaving that up to our acting city manager, up to our HR person. So just so you know, that's kind of where I'm starting from. I do want to point out that the administrative assistant is remarkable. She has a master's degree, and I am really confident that if we perhaps listen to your suggestions as far as workflows for not only this person, but the assistant city clerk, I think you have plenty to do. I guess one of my main concerns is that we've had, you know, respecting employee privacy, it's no secret that we've had a fair amount of employee turnover in the past three or four months. So can you talk about, what does our, I think there is some churn and some healing that needs to happen amongst our current staff. Can you talk a little bit about your perspective on that?
Yeah, I'd love to talk about that. My favorite space within human resources is employee engagement, and I think it really starts at the top. You have to understand what are the elements that engage employees. And I like to say, like, engagement is really simple, but it's really complicated. It's a simple concept, but when you have to actually, you know, in the workplace, start to engage people, that's when it gets really difficult. And it starts from a place where most people don't understand what is it that truly engages people. It's not the foosball table, it's not the cafe, it's not any of those things. It is absolutely, positively, the recognition that employees receive, the relationship with their direct supervisor, the communication from the broader leadership within an organization. If those kinds of things are there, your opportunities to engage your employees go up exponentially. If they have a bad relationship with their manager, if people from the top don't communicate down, if there's not bidirectional communication within an organization, you know, you could pretty much know right now that there's not high levels of engagement. So I think you really have to start with understanding, you know, where are we engaged in this organization and to what level are we engaged? And I think I do engagement surveys quite often, and I often find folks are very surprised, not that they don't have engaged employees, but the reasons their employees aren't engaged. And sometimes it's quite shocking that, and managers have to take an internal look and go, you know, I seem to be part of the problem. What do I need to do to do something different? And then that's when we develop the action plan and work with them. But I think if you really want to have an understanding of your culture, sometimes you have to start with measuring it, finding out where the problems are, and then holding everybody to account to then start moving forward and slowly but methodically kind of fixing those issues. And invariably, it really comes down to relationships with people. Throw out the foosball table, none of those things work. Maybe they're fun, but at the end of the day, it's not going to engage employees. So it really starts with understanding, sometimes you've just got to measure the culture and start from there.
I appreciate that. That's been my experience in real life. And I think one of the benefits here is that we have some very strong department heads, and, you know, they want, they want, they're good people, they want to support their people. And if they need a tool to do that better, you know, that's where I see your role. And I'm happy that we have those strong department heads. How many hours are you anticipating, so how many hours a week is your responsibility for us?
So let's break it down by just the different buckets that we provided in the survey. And mind you, it was a good guess to start with, just knowing you guys and sort of, you know, what you do on a daily basis. So we started with 12 hours a week of an HR manager sitting, you know, sitting at the city, available for whomever needs, you know, somebody to talk to, you know, administrates some FMLA, whatever the case may be. So that transactional stuff that you were talking about. And then we built in a lot of the higher level stuff as well. And what you typically see is those go in waves. You need it a lot, and then you don't need it for a while. And so the thing about, one of the things I think attracts folks to our organization is that our willingness to be flexible. If you decide you really need 16 hours, then we back off the other stuff. If you decide 12 is great, then we need more of that. If you budget $62,000, we can move that any way that benefits the organization. So if you say 10 hours is the number, and we need more of this, and we want to do some engagement, and we want to do some of that, we have to sit down with you guys. You have to help us understand what you need, and then we can also work with you to determine how to make those needs come true. So it's really, this is a starting point, and we may find just through an audit that, you know, we got a lot of work upfront to deal with compliance or something like that. So we're going to have a lot more of that HR generalist time upfront. And when those things start to wane, maybe you can back down to 12 hours. What I'm trying to get at is, we've got a certain number here, but we can substitute any way you need to be most effective.
I see.
We're not going to stick to this number because we said it. We're going to do whatever you need as an organization to get to where you need to go. And that's the flexibility that we can offer.
Okay. I appreciate that. I think I just have, I think my final question is for the assistant manager, Green. Are you, are you there, Mr. Green?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, hi. So I just wanted to check in with you. How is this all sounding for you?
Yeah, the reason I recommended them is because I think this would be a good fit. Naturally, the first couple of weeks there on site is when we're going to learn the most about our organization, when they do our audit, and then we'll just take it from there.
I appreciate that. Okay. And then, I guess I, I'm sorry, one more question. I feel like Columbo. For the Sage folks, one of the things that I started thinking about in the past year is that I felt like we needed somebody who could advocate for our manager, for our peace chief. You know, these are higher level people. And although we sign their contracts, we have one employee, we have the city manager. So I think this, at this point, when we're undergoing transition, is particularly important to offer support. Can you talk about what kind of support you generally offer for higher level employees?
That's you, huh?
Yeah, that's you, huh?
So that's one of the things that, because we, like, my background, I am, I came from a lot of years of being a chief operating officer and EVP of HR. So I did one of these things, and I helped out at the same time, which is a little crazy, not very smart on my part. It's kind of busy. So I understand, like, those huge dilemmas and that difficult time when you're trying to pull together an organization and to deal with these business decisions. It might be from a contract negotiation and how does that, how does that fit? Or you might have just gotten just creamed by an employee and you're really upset by it, you know? And so what we really spend time with, and I do, is to really be that, that component, if we can be. You know, there's times where things have to get shared, you know, legally and whatnot. But in general, it's like, hey, what do you think about this? Or how should I approach my boss with that? I think I'm underpaid. What do you think? You know? Or I think I'm underappreciated, and I'm really angry. You know, how shall I go into this meeting more prepared? And we'll problem solve that. And a lot of that occurs, I got to be honest with you, Sage is open. When you look at our hours, you Google us, you'll see open 24 hours, and you're like, what? That's a new company. How are they open 24 hours? You know, they got a neon sign going, you know, open, open. But what we have really is, we don't have a neon sign, but we are available to our employees 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Because a lot of times, that issue is on your mind tonight. You can't sleep tonight because of it, and you got to get it off. And 90% of that, I'm going to be honest with you, when it's developing that relationship with the individuals, that doesn't pay the bill. That's just good partnerships. That's just good relationships with folks. Now, if it crosses the line and it needs to be dealt with and handled from an HR standpoint, then we talk about that too. Say, well, let's off, you know, because here's where, here's where we just cross over into the world of, we've got a, you know, we've got a, you know, investigator, write this down, deal with. But if it's just, how do I, how do I get along, or how do I deal with this, or it just isn't expens- you know, I don't know how to sort it out, that's what we're there for. And we've got a lot of years behind us and a lot of, you know, our backside being just totally wiped out in meetings, right? So we get it, we know, we understand the pains of that, we understand budget pains. I understand finding two million by tomorrow at 8:00 AM and boss called at 10:00. So we're there for you. We'll help you from a business standpoint as well as the discussion.
Thank you.
So to me, that's part of communication, that's part of building that rapport, that's part of partnering.
Thank you. That concludes my questions, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilmember CEO, any questions or comments?
The only comment that I have is I'd be very interested to see how this works out over time. You know, it's a whole new thing to me, having kind of an à la carte personnel management situation. And again, I'll be interested to see how this works out over time. So, thank you and good luck.
Very good. Councilmember Kamara Sulek, any questions or comments?
Yes, I do. Thank you. I, first off, thank you for the presentation. I'm particularly concerned when you talked about, you know, the keeper of the, of culture. And you're going to be spending 12 hours onsite at City Hall, and then will the rest be depending upon what we need?
Yes. So the HR generalist is the person that's going to be in your organization 12 hours a week.
Okay.
When other things, bigger things pop up, and it's above, for lack of a good term, a grade of the HR manager, it's a phone call back to us. If we need to come in and solve a problem, we come in and solve the problem. We'll come, we'll come to the city, we'll come to wherever it is that we have to solve the problem. Some of it, sure, could be done over Zoom. We've all learned that in the last three months, that a whole lot of things can be done on a TV screen. But there are times when you need somebody eyeball to eyeball to have those conversations, and if that's what we need to do, that's what we do.
And I want to clarify, can I just clarify? We facilitate your culture and we help to improve it, and that's through multiple boots on the ground, which are your boots. So we teach you how to do that, because if it only works while we're there, it'll never take hold. And so that's part of the evaluation, and that's part of, when you get those results, it's really working with those individual managers and leaders that are struggling so that they understand themselves, and we prepare them with the tools and the feedback and the help and the support so that they can champion that culture themselves. It's a truly got to, we can help facilitate it, but it's really got to be carried out by the leaders.
Okay. So how, how do you, it sounds like there'd be some time to ramp up and to get to know our, you know, our culture, our staff, what we, what we need. And I guess I'm concerned, how do you evaluate how much we need right now for the different areas, whether it's compliance, employee relations, culture development, you know, benefits, and any fires that need to be put out? It seems like a little more time at the beginning would be necessary to assemble all that information to see what we need and by whom?
You're absolutely right. And when you look at the very first line item, human resource audit, which shows zero cost to you, that's, that's one of the first stages of the baseline. And that's where we will get, and we'll be asking some, so we'll be looking at the files, looking at the benefits. So we're going to put our eyes on everything HR, and we start with that. And that's pulling in managers and people that are responsible for it, and asking a lot of questions. What I do is, it's more, my interviewing style is to ask a basic behavioral based question and let the person take it over. And I say that, I say I do that because I'm lazy and I don't want to talk or I don't want to do the work. I'm really doing that because I want the meeting to take it wherever it goes. And you learn so much that way. It doesn't matter if we start off with FLSA, compliance, or bumpets, or union contracts, or high five. Doesn't matter. It's conversation. It's, you learn a lot. You know, well, I don't really know where that goes because so-and-so does it. Okay, now I realize that we just have to remember compartments. Okay, we got to break down that. That's not cool because you spend time doing this. And so this is where we start to learn, because we're going to look at your foundation. You know, one of the biggest parts of any foundation of any organization is your people, your policies, your procedures, your processes. And those are the things that when we come in and audit, we're going to look at. And we won't have it all down by the time we do that audit, because we need to know how much we're going to learn right there and how much then, okay, you got a lot of cleanup over here, and your employees are afraid of this, and I don't know what's going on with the relationship between, you know, this department and that, or payroll and, you know, HR, whatever it could be. But there's a lot of, you know, pushback or, you know, me, 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 all about me. So we will evaluate that right there from the very beginning, that first line item that says zero, because that is so important to us to understand how department with you. That's really the foundation that we are going to build with, is that audit.
So it sounds like it could take more than 12 hours a week at the beginning to establish all of that.
And we'll set priorities too, because not everything, I mean, you've got a great, you know, you're doing well, the city does a fantastic job. So it's not like you're, you know, starting from, you know, doing the worst case. So we can decide, you know, do we want to fix this? know, do we wanna fix this now? Or is this more important? So we'll stack it layered based on importance and stuff.
I think the other thing that we can do is because we did do the, the salary, the compensation study, we have developed some relationships. And I know a lot of the folks already that are, that are sitting on this call. So we, we do have some understanding of the culture. We do have knowledge of the folks here. So it's a little bit different than some of the engagements that we have when we know absolutely nobody. We do have an understanding. Now, do we know everybody? And do we know all about the city? No. But we do have a leg up because we do have some of these relationships that are started. We'll take that great place to start from.
That's definitely an advantage.
Yeah. We got a big HR item already knocked off, which is job descriptions and compensation plans. Off list. So that, those are huge expensive items that take up a lot of time.
Okay. So with, with compliance, and let's jump into promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion for current staff, future staff, and looking at helping us become a more diverse city, at least staff wise. And, and your perspective on how we can improve, can you, can you talk about that briefly on how you would specifically address that? Especially since we have very low diversity right now. But that's obviously something that we, that is a priority for us to change. So if you could talk about that for...
Okay. So the way I see it is, and it's, it's worked for me every time for, I don't wanna say how many years, but when you start your recruitment process, you just start it with an eye on diversity right from the beginning. You need to utilize diverse resources to pull your candidates in. You need to understand that if I only, say, for example, if you lack diversity today and you focus on employees that refer other employees, how do you think you're gonna look tomorrow? Pretty non-diverse. It's just the way it is. So what you really gotta do is you've got to do your research in the surrounding areas. Because people don't drive much these days, at least not right now, for whatever reason, even though gas prices are a little lower, they won't drive. So you really gotta look at all your packets of employees that are available in diverse communities and are qualified, in diverse communities. And you gotta really start your pipelines. And you gotta develop those pipelines. And you gotta keep those pipelines rolling. So it might be outreach to particular colleges and schools or particular groups that you focus on and you keep focusing on. So that even if you don't have a job opening today, when it comes, they've seen you, they've heard of you, and they wanna work from these communities that are more diverse. And so you have to really, really plan that out and map that out and, and make that a part of your everyday search. And you never, ever, ever stop sourcing for people. You don't. Because it's too hard to start. It takes too long to ramp up. Then you get nervous and then you'll take the, you know, any employee referral will loop instead of looking at a nice diverse pool of candidates. And I'll tell you, if you pull in a diverse pool of candidates and you interview behavioral based and you have consistency in your interview, every single time, you'll have a diverse workforce. You will naturally select and appropriately select most qualified, and it will be a diverse workforce. But you gotta start right at the very top, which is that big old funnel of your pipeline candidates. Where are you gonna pull them from? Where are you gonna get them? How are you gonna educate the world of the great place to work for is soon? Then you pull it in and you will naturally, right down that funnel, there'll be a diverse set of candidates and you will have a diverse workforce. And then you gotta keep that. And that's where, how you come into play with the training and, you know, engagement and equal employment opportunity and making certain that year. It's not always, in our opinion, it's not always just about, you know, working and worrying about helping out, who's the word, yeah, inclusion or training. It's about really understanding the laws. You have to know that. Because the foundation of the law is good. And so it's good education for your managers, good education for your employees. How do you, you know, be good, good teammates, you know, professional teammates. A lot of it can be handled just right there. And, and just being good partners with each other. But in general, it's gonna start up here in that funnel, way up here. And that's what my team will research and do for you, depending on the positions. And that's what that HR manager will focus on to help you.
That sounds like a really good thing to focus on for both perspective for hiring, starting that funnel, and for our current staff, the culture. And definitely a major opportunity for, for the city to go forward. So I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all the questions I have.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Councilmember Kamara Sulek. We, we do have a motion on the floor moved by Mitchell, seconded by Marl to acknowledge and approve. Before I open it up for any additional discussion on the motion, let me just say again, ladies, we appreciate your time. Heidi, I'm, I'm so pleased that you pitched me on this idea a, a month back. And I have to tell you in all candor, I don't think I've ever been more excited about the possibility of, of an HR manager within city government as I am today. Because I think you bring the expertise that's needed, but also the right approach. And in the process, you're saving us some money, which we, we appreciate because these are lean and uncertain times. So as my council colleague, Mr. CEO articulated a few moments ago, we do look forward to working with you. We expect great things. And I do think this will tangibly benefit the, the organization and our employees. And actually, in addition to that, I do look forward to having some more focused conversations with you about what we can do to help improve the, the culture and employee morale. And as I said tonight in my, my speech, you know, we got a, a really exceptional group of employees who dedicate themselves to, to this community on a daily basis, and they, they strive for excellence. And I wanna make sure that that's acknowledged and rewarded. And that people feel empowered too. I, I should note that. So thank you for your comments today. It was a good discussion. Anything further on this motion?
Your Honor, this is Kristen.
Please.
Thank you. I, I just want to say I heavily support this motion. I'm happy to see that there's, it seems as though there's more unanimity as far as heading this direction. And I, it was a little bit of a, a back and forth and a struggle. And I, I just want to pat us all on the back for doing that. And what I'm hoping is that every, everything that we've been talking about can be left to the assistant city manager and to HR. Because as council, our job is policy. And it's wonderful. We all want our employees to succeed. And I think to step back and have them do their job is the best way to do it. So I, that's all I have to say for now. I'm looking forward to any other comments.
Thank you. Any additional discussion on the motion? None. And there's a motion on the floor moved by Mitchell, seconded by Marl to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. Ladies, thank you for your time. Look forward to working with you. Have a wonderful evening. I do wanna note for my colleagues' benefit, we are, we are at about 9:40. We still have quite a bit of territory to get, to, to, got a lot of territory to cover, excuse me, this evening. So I'm gonna move at a fairly brisk pace. So if you could please make sure that your questions and comments are clear and succinct, that would be appreciated. We move on now to business item 20-104, request for waiver penalties, excuse me, request to waive penalties. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 22, 2020 memo from City Treasurer Bennett and to approve or not to approve granting relief to customers who did not receive their utility bills prior to receipt of the past due notice by waiving late fees due to extraordinary circumstances of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Move to acknowledge and to approve.
Moved by Mayor Protem Girbaud to acknowledge and to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Del Orco. I know that Treasurer Bennett is not with us this evening, but I believe we have Assistant Treasurer Miley Weberline on the line. Is that correct?
Yes, I'm here.
Thank you for being with us, Miley. We appreciate it. Do you wanna provide a, a brief synopsis of Treasurer Bennett's June 22 memo?
Sure. So you might recall, the original water sewer bill that covered services from December through February were originally due on May 1. Those bills were mailed out at the end of March. And then early, obviously due to COVID, City Council did extend the due date from May 1 to June 1. Notices were posted on our city website, as well as an email blast was sent out to all of those that had an email address on file notifying them of this change. Letters were also mailed out late April, early May to all residents and businesses that had not yet paid at the time the letter was drafted. So we did make sure we had that notification out. June 2, past due notices were mailed out. By June 22, I had received about a dozen emails and phone calls from a variety of residents that had just received their bill after June 2, 10 of which took a one-time penalty waiver to remove the penalty from their account. As of today, I've received about 16 total emails and phone calls with that same notification that they received their bill after the extended due date. For informational purposes, the one-time penalty waiver was approved by a resolution by City Council in November of 2013. And on page 160, I believe, of your packet is information regarding a waiver that was approved for late fees for a number of residents that did not receive their original bill due to a similar post office delay in 2014. So this is a request to approve a waiver for those residents that had not received their bill on time and they received it after the penalty was passed out.
Very good. Thank you, Miley. Let, let me just add that the, the resolution to approve a one-time waiver, which was approved, or excuse me, adopted by City Council in the fall of 2013, that was an initiative that Mayor Protem Girbaud and I worked on actually early in my tenure as mayor. And as a general rule, I think this should, that policy should serve as a way to, to, to resolve these types of issues. However, in light of the COVID health pandemic and the fact that we know that many of our citizens failed to receive mail on time, or in some cases failed to receive mail at all, I'm fully in support of the motion that was moved by Girbaud, seconded by Del Orco to acknowledge and to approve the, the waiver. Is there additional discussion or comments on this motion? Anyone from the dais? Councilwoman Dillon?
Thank you. Miley, just for clarification, is, can any resident claim this one-time COVID waiver? Or is it just for these two individuals that have come forth?
It's a good question. I had, out of the 12 that had contacted me by June 22, 10 of them did take the one-time waiver as a way to remove the penalty. They did note that they thought, while they did take the waiver, they thought that there should be something else available to them instead of just this one-time waiver. So I did have the two that you see in your packet that did send out an email. In addition, since then, I had received about three emails with the same type of request, not wanting to use a waiver and wanted more of a COVID waiver per se.
Okay. So I guess that's what I'm just trying to figure out then. What exactly are we offering right now? Is this a blanket COVID waiver?
I think the request is for a waiver for those individuals in particular. I have a list of about 16, kind of which, like I mentioned, did take the one-time waiver. But a waiver for COVID for those, at least these 16 that have contacted us that they had not received their bill. So something outside of the one-time waiver that was adopted back in 2013.
Okay. I, I think I'm asking this wrong. So I, I see what the ask is. What is our gift? Are we going to the people that took their one-time waiver? Are we giving them back that one-time waiver? I just feel like we need to make everyone whole. It sort of goes to the, the water meter issue, that I don't wanna just pick one person, that if this was, you know, a citywide issue, we can't isolate it to a neighborhood or a section of the city. So at this point, would it be in the city's best interest to just offer the COVID waiver to anybody for this one particular billing cycle?
My understanding, talking with Mickey Joe, that it would be just for those, her intention was for those that had received their bill after the extended due date. So we would go back to those 10 that took that penalty waiver and pretty much remove that they had taken the one-time penalty waiver and change it to a COVID waiver. Is that help answer your question?
I think so. But are there others outstanding, I guess is what I'm trying to figure out that you haven't heard from yet?
I don't think so. Because the most recent quarterly bill that would also show any balance forward has been mailed out and those have started to get received as of this week. So I think I have heard from those that had not received their previous bill or received them late.
Okay. So then, and, and I'll just stop with this. So then if anyone asks for it at this point, are we going to give it to them for that billing cycle? If someone says, I didn't get my bill, I was late to pay it, can I get the waiver? What is the city's position?
Go ahead, Miley. I was gonna say if this motion is approved, then they would be granted a COVID waiver.
So everybody? So it's not just limited to the people at this moment that are identified here?
Yeah. It sounds like there really aren't any additional utility customers in the network who have outstanding bills. But I would assume, Miley, if they contacted us and said they didn't receive the bill and this motion passes, that they would be extended the COVID waiver.
Correct. I would, in addition, as I've done with these two individuals and the three others that reset emails afterwards, you know, require at least some type of written documentation that I could attach to their water account with some sort of statement that, you know, they didn't receive their water bill on time, just so we have that trail as justification.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much.
Additional questions from the dais? Turning to the folks that are participating remotely, Councilwoman Mitchell, any questions for Assistant Treasurer Weberline?
No, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Ms. Weberline.
Mr. CEO? You're muted, Jack. I'm gonna take that as no. Councilmember Kamara Sulek, any questions?
No questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, very good. We do have a motion on the floor then unless there's additional discussion. There is a motion, Mr. Girbaud?
Yeah, just real quick. Do we need to mention the actual billing period in this motion?
Probably wouldn't hurt. This is the spring billing period. So what did it run? What was the billing, what was the billing period specifically in terms of months, Assistant Treasurer Weberline?
This covered services from December 1 through the end of February 2020.
Okay. December 1 to the end of February. So, Mr. Girbaud, Mr. Del Orco, unless you object, here's how I would state the motion. To acknowledge receipt of the June 22, 2020 memo from City Treasurer Bennett and to approve the granting of relief for customers who did not receive utility bills prior to receipt of past due notice by waiving late fees due to extraordinary situations of the COVID pandemic, this run, this applies to utility bills running from December 1 to the end of February 2020.
That's fine.
You good with that, Mr. Girbaud?
Yeah. I, I just wanna make sure we
Yep, that it's noted.
Deal into that period.
And Clerk Royal, you're clear on that additional verbiage? Okay, very good. All right. We have a motion moved by Mayor Protem Girbaud, seconded by Councilmember Del Orco to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. The motion carries unanimously. We move on to new business item 20-105, appointment of Mike Green as interim city manager. This will be a motion to approve and appoint or not to approve Mike Green as interim This will be a motion to approve and appoint or not to approve Mike Green as Intrum City Manager effective July 6, 2020 through August 3, 2020, with an annual salary increase of $12,425 during the transition period. Of course, that amount will be prorated.
Move to approve and appoint.
Moved by Mayor Protem Girbaugh to approve and appoint. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Seo. I mean, I don't really have much to add. We discussed this at a work meeting, I believe, two weeks ago. Happy to address any questions, concerns that folks have. Any questions from the dais?
I have some, Your Honor.
Yes, please.
This is Tristan. Mr. Green, I just want to check in with you. Do you feel like with the support of HR, do you feel like council at this time could take a step back? You'll have the support of the transition team, but do you, do you think we can truly step away from operational issues with you at the helm for now?
That is always my goal as a manager, and you guys will learn and see how I write and write reports over the next month or however long I have the opportunity to be in this position. But that's always, is my goal as a manager, is try to keep policy decisions at you guys and keep operations in-house.
I appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Additional questions? Mr. Seo?
No, Your Honor.
Mr. Kamara Sulak?
No additional questions, thank you.
Unless there's discussion, we have a motion on the floor moved by Girbaugh, seconded by Seo to approve and to appoint. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Moving on to new business item 20-106, Resolution to Appoint Staff. This will be a motion to approve and adopt or not to approve the resolution as submitted, appointing staff for a period of July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021.
Move to approve and adopt.
Moved by Girbaugh to approve and adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Acting City Manager Green, you care to make a comment on this?
Not really, sir. This is pretty straightforward. This is just something we have to do every single year come July.
Okay. Questions, comments from the dais? Transition to those participating remotely. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. I had just written a note to Mr. Green asking for clarity purposes if it wouldn't be worth removing the city manager language on this document, since we're not taking care of that right now. Let's just include the information that we are truly acting on tonight.
Mr. Green, do you have any thoughts on that inquiry?
If anything, I would leave it on there and just put name as vacant officially, because since we are a council manager, form of government, it'd be best just to leave it listed that this is an office we do have.
That sounds great. I'm happy with that suggestion. Thank you.
Yep, no objections then. If the motion is approved and the resolution is adopted, we will list vacant adjacent to the city manager's position. Mr. Seo, any questions, comments?
None, Your Honor.
Mr. Kamara Sulak?
I concur, and especially with our fabulous police chief, Chief Hart. So I'm all for it.
Very good. There's a motion on the floor moved by Mayor Protem Girbaugh, seconded by Councilwoman Dillon, to approve and to adopt. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. We move to new business item 20-107, Establishment of a Risk Mitigation Committee. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 30, 2020 memo from Mayor Marlin to approve or not to approve the appointments as submitted to the risk mitigation. Actually, should read working group. So we'll make that change. Actually, I'll move the motion then noting that committee will be changed to working group. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Again, my memo of June 30th was, I think, clear and straightforward. I've addressed the need for a broad risk mitigation strategy at, I believe, the last four meetings. I addressed it again this evening, and I first touched on it back in January of this year. I think that it's imperative and very timely. I'm very pleased with the group that's been assembled under the leadership of Mayor Protem Girbaugh and facilitated by Lori Champion. I'll ask the city clerk evidently, is Lori Champion on the Zoom meeting this evening?
Yes.
Oh, okay. Oh, Lori, wonderful. Let me, let's unmute Lori. Good evening, Lori. Let me just say, and I mentioned this in the memo, but Lori is a Celine native, a city resident, has more than two decades of relevant risk mitigation experience, working with both nonprofits and Fortune 500 companies. She's graciously offered her services to us pro bono. So serving as facilitator, working with Mayor Protem Girbaugh, I expect for this process to run very smoothly, for every division and department of city government to be appropriately evaluated and to receive some well-vetted recommendations on how we could improve internal safeguards, ordinances, or policies. With that, Lori, God bless you for being patient this evening. Is there anything that you would like to add?
Just a pleasure, too. I work with the team. I've enjoyed the discussions and look forward to working with you all, so thank you.
Very good. Let's open it up for questions or comments. Anyone from the dais care to make a comment or ask a question? No? Then we'll transition to those working remotely. Councilwoman Mitchell, any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Mr. Seo?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Mr. Kamara Sulak?
I would just like to also thank Ms. Champion, especially for doing it pro bono. That's really very giving, and I truly appreciate that, as I'm sure my colleagues do. So thank you for assisting us with this well-needed work group. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion moved by Marl, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge and to approve. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Lori, thank you again for your time this evening, and Mayor Protem Girbaugh and I will be in touch with you, and we'll get an initial kickoff meeting scheduled here in the upcoming weeks.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Wonderful. We move on to new business item 20-108. This is Sholdice Request for RBC Repair Payment Number One. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the June 4, 2020, letter from Timothy Arden at Tetra Tech and to approve or not to approve pay request number one from Sholdice Industries in the amount of $216,710.93.
Move to acknowledge and approve.
Moved by Seo to acknowledge and approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilwoman Dillon. Mr. Rubel, are you?
I'm prepared for the evening.
Yeah, if you want to maybe briefly touch upon your colleague's memo of June 1, and then we'll yield the floor to our wastewater treatment superintendent in the event that he has some remarks.
I'll be, I'll be very brief. Mr. Arden has reviewed the pay application for Sholdice, which took it right about the time that the installation was occurring. Since then, this is about 30 days old, since then, all the installation has been completed, and really, the only remaining steps at this point is waiting for two spare gearboxes to be returned, repaired in the factory and returned to the city. That will complete the contract. We're very pleased with this contractor. They have been very good to work with, very responsive, and I certainly would recommend if the city were open to continuing our relationship with that contractor through an as-needed contract or any of those situations, I think you'd be well-served to do that. In particular, a gearbox, you know, one of the older gearboxes could break at some point, and you may wish a speedy solution to that, and I think this contractor would be very good to consider for that.
Excellent. Very good. Thank you, Mr. Rubel. Why don't you hang tight there in the event that there are questions that are best addressed by you? Mr. Wygowski, are you still on the line with us?
Mayor Marlin, fortunately, Steve had to step away for the night.
Okay. All right, in his absence, Acting City Manager Green, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I have no further comment.
Okay. Comments or questions from the dais? We'll go right down the line. Girbaugh, when you're done, then Dillon and Del Orco.
Just real quick, now that these have all been replaced, are every one of those rotating cylinders operating and rotating consistently or constantly?
I checked with Steve about that a couple weeks ago, and I thought the answer was yes, although I read his memo, and it's, when I read it, I interpret it to mean that he's having an electrical problem with two of them. Unrelated to this work, it's farther upstream of this. So it looks like, in fact, I think he told me there's a part on order that a local company from Dexter that helps him with UIS is waiting for, and then that would get those two back online. Not mechanical, electrical.
So they will be on, running all 24 hours a day?
Yeah, that's, that's the way they're supposed to be.
Supposed to be doing, okay. Thank you. I just wanted to confirm.
I, good question.
Thank you, Gary. Oh, sorry, the mayor had to leave for a second. Ms. Dillon, do you have any questions, please?
Thank you, that's okay. I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Wygowski and Mr. Green, who gave me a tour of the facility. So I got to see all these little pictures and actually know what exactly they are. I got to see them in person. It was very impressive to see all the machines working, and you can tell that they're working by the sound they make, that they're not making a grind anymore. It's a nice buzzing motor go. And I do, and Mr. Green can correct me if I'm wrong, there were two units, I believe, that were not running the day that we were there. Correct, Mr. Green?
Correct, and I believe Steve mentioned to us as well that they are on schedule to be fixed.
Right, right. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Del Orco?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, that was my only question relating to the two that were non-operational. It looks like in the memo, Steve mentioned there are two electrical buckets that needed to be rebuilt by UIS, and that, I just wanted to clarify that that wasn't related to the contract with Sholdice, and it sounds like that's the case.
Absolutely correct.
Yep, okay, that's it.
Excellent. Transitioning to the folks who are participating remotely. Councilwoman Mitchell, any questions or comments?
No, thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Seo?
No, Your Honor.
Mr. Kamara Sulak?
No additional questions, thank you.
Okay, very good. We do have a motion on the floor moved by Seo, seconded by Dillon, to acknowledge and to approve, unless there's additional discussion, and I hear none. We'll proceed to vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Move on to the last action item of the evening, which is new business item 20-109, Letter of Understanding Police Officer Recruit Position. This will be a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 2, 2020, memo from Police Chief Hart, and to approve or not to approve the recommendation to allow Chief Hart to negotiate the LOU with the Police Officers Labor Council and Mayor to sign said agreement, and to approve or not to approve the recommendation to establish a police academy tuition agreement, and be afforded the ability for Chief Hart to use discretion on offering to sponsor candidates in MCOS-approved police academies.
I'm moved.
You, Mr. Seo, do you want to move to acknowledge, approve, and approve?
That's correct.
Very good. And was that a second from Mitchell?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Very good. Chief Hart, do you care to comment on your memo of July 2?
Thank you very much, Mayor and Council. I apologize for the late entry onto the agenda. We all worked very hard last week to get everything in your hands in a very timely fashion, but did have this come up on my radar on Thursday. A bit of a time crunch to try to get someone into the academy on the 20th. By creating this new classification, I've just been sitting here kind of running some numbers, we have two vacancies right now, and if we create this police recruit classification and pay minimum wage or some other fee less than the 28, 37 an hour, the money's already there within the budget. I was just running the numbers, that we could pay for the academy if we do this classification right out of our current budget. So forgive me, I went to Taylor Schools, but I was just trying to crunch some numbers here, and I'm really excited to kind of broaden our horizon a little bit and get active in recruiting and being competitive with some of our surrounding departments.
Very good, Chief. Thank you for your work on this. I know you turned this around quickly, and I'll note for my colleagues and for the public's benefit, I think you and I first talked about this probably six to 12 months ago. But as I stated in my State of the City address, I really believe this is an approach that we should support and approve, not only because it provides financial incentives to young people who may not have the resources to go through the academy, but will also help us attract and retain a diverse and talented workforce. And I'll add, and I think you noted these, noted this in your remarks, is that we compensate in terms of base salary, what we compensate our officers is very competitive. In fact, I think it's among the, it's amongst the highest in the county. But we don't, unfortunately, we're not in a position to offer a pension, and we're not a large agency, and there's some pros that are associated with being small, and conversely, there's some things that potential candidates would find less than appealing. So to maintain a competitive edge, I think this is a program that we need to adopt and support and approve, and again, I appreciate your work on this. I think it's timely and important, and I think it's a tool that will help allow our police department to move forward and to become stronger in the process.
I think so, and really, this goes to loyalty. We're, I'm trying to reestablish loyalty, not only from the organization, but what we receive back from our employees. You know, my dad always taught me, you take care of your job, and your job will always take care of you. Somehow along the way, I think that's been kind of lost over the years, and I feel that by us offering this out to some of our younger police officers, who are aspiring police officers, it really kind of extends that a bit of loyalty, and in return, we're asking for 48 months of at least loyalty from them. And I think this is a great way to get career police officers here, and we can kind of have a blend of second career and career police officers at the Celine Police Department.
Excellent. Thank you. Questions or comments from the dais?
I would just like to say that this is an excellent initiative. I'm glad you brought it to us, Chief, and I fully support it.
Thank you.
Transitioning to the folks who are participating remotely. Councilwoman Dillon, or Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief, I wrote you an email after you sent out your proposal, and I just, I want to advocate for paying more than minimum wage, and I think what that speaks to is your comments about loyalty, about being a competitive employer. You know, minimum wage, we can get anywhere, and these folks are going to be working hard. I think they deserve more than minimum wage. What are your thoughts on that?
I'm not opposed to it. If we went up to, let's say, in your email, you had proposed, I think, $15 an hour, just kind of, just as a number. So just running that number, it takes us from $6,900 in estimated wages to $9,600. So we would still be able to afford the academy and pay the recruit, you know, a decent wage for their efforts while they're in the police academy.
Okay, well, I need to hear what my peers say.
Very good. Councilmember Seo, any questions or comments?
I'm glad to see this come to fruition. I know over the years, ever since I was in the police department, and we began whittling away at the kind of benefits that police officers get here at Celine, I've often questioned exactly the point the chief brought up, that is, that, you know, the allegiance is a two-way street. Not that you can buy allegiance, but there's certainly some benefits that I think are bedrock that are necessary, and we've depleted some of those and have made our position perhaps a little less attractive. So I think this is a first step towards making it more attractive, and I would certainly support what Ms. Mitchell says about raising it to $15 an hour wage during the time of the academy.
Very good. Councilmember Kamara Sulak, any thoughts or comments?
I appreciate Chief Hart's initiative on this, and trust and attracting good candidates and longevity are very important. So I'm happy, I'm very happy to support this. Thank you.
Very good. And Chief, I have no objections to Councilwoman Mitchell's suggestion, which is also supported by Councilman Seo. I would leave it to your discretion. You're the person who's going to be screening candidates and ultimately approving the sponsorship. So if you have the financial resources in your budget to provide more than minimum wage, I'm comfortable with you making that call based on the circumstances and what is available at the time.
Well, that's too bad. Okay. Here's your.
Good, thank you.
Anything further?
You're down.
Please.
So I just, I support this. I just want to make sure that we're not just sort of shooting from the hip here with a dollar amount. I mean, I, do we have to make a decision on that right now? And I'm not opposed to it. I just want to make sure that we're finding the right compensation level, because we may find out that it's, you know, 1585 or something. So I would rather weave that to the chief, to research, to vet, and then return with, you know, and I don't know that that needs our approval. I mean, it's coming out of your budget, so it's less bullets for you at the end of the So whatever it needs to be the thing, I just don't want us to just sort of make a blanket decision just on a number that we don't know has any foundation.
Sure. I think that, and the union's been fabulous with this. I think they understand the potential of gaining some really high-quality candidates here through this initiative, and the issue with the dollar amount is we do need to establish it, because this will be part of the collective bargaining agreement. This will require a letter of agreement with POLC. I'm actually comfortable with the 15, because I know that agencies around us are paying a little less, they're paying that base minimum wage, and we're talking about, at least with this candidate right now, someone with a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, and then just the mere word of this kind of getting around the community, I had someone who's been a reserve with us for a while put themselves through the Reserve Academy, and they were beaten down my door today going, is this a possibility? And he's another great candidate here for us. So, we're really starting to open up some doors here. I appreciate the fact that you want to leave it in my hands, you could leave it in my hands to negotiate that amount with the union, or we could set it at 15 here. I, I'll leave that up to you.
Go ahead, Mr. Girba.
Chief Hart, can, since you said it's part of a contract, whatever, can you provide a range that would be based upon experiences and degrees and skill sets or whatever?
Sure. I think that we could look at, you know, just to, just to get into a police academy, you have to have the equivalent of an associate's degree. So, we could start there, let's say, at $12 an hour, and if you have a bachelor's degree, we can do 15.
Yeah, I think that would be an excellent way to try and address that.
It gives you flexibility, too. Yep, yep, I think that's a good idea. Let's go that route.
Okay.
Beautiful. All right, unless there's anything further, we do have a motion on the floor moved by CEO, seconded by Mitchell, to acknowledge, to approve, and to approve. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Eyes have it, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Moving on to the discussion portion of the agenda, first up is Commission Committee and Task Force reports from council members, starting at the dais. Councilwoman Dylan?
Thank you. Just my weekly Census Committee check-in, Celine is at almost 80% return right now, so, which is a great number, but I wanted to make mention that, starting probably the beginning of August, if you have not responded, there will be in-person people coming to knock on your door. Please do not open your door unless they show you the adequate credentials, which hopefully we will get a copy of, so people will know what to look for. But the easiest way to avoid that is to go online, or you can do it by phone. If you have any questions or concerns, the city clerk can help, the library can help, the senior center can help, or you can always reach out to me, and I will do whatever I can to assist.
Very good, thank you. The report, or other Commission Committee reports from the dais. Transitioning then to those, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Del Orco?
The Environmental Commission did meet briefly via Zoom a couple of weeks ago. The only issue that was really substantively discussed was the canceling of the e-waste recycling event. Obviously, that was something that we had to do in light of the COVID-19 situation. Also, there's still a level of discomfort with going out into the public with farmer's market booths, so on and so forth, for many members of the Environmental Commission. One piece that we discussed that was financial in nature was how to protect the funds that we had for the e-waste recycling event in our budget, and I spoke briefly with Joanne McDonough about this, and it sounds like all we need to do is a budget amendment for the 2021, or the following subsequent fiscal year to, to get that money back, and maybe we can host two to make up for the one we lost this year. So, that's what, what I have for Environmental Commission.
Very good. Transitioning to the folks who are participating remotely. Councilwoman Mitchell, any Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
I do, Your Honor. The HDC met this past week. I'm happy to say that we have begun survey work on the proposed district, which is, if people don't remember, it's East Henry Street, and the software that council agreed to use is quite impressive. I think we're going to be happy with it. I think it will be a great resource from years to come, for years to come. And also, you may have noticed during the past two weeks, we had historic buildings noted in our historic district and in other spots. I had somebody ask me, you know, well, well, what's with all these signs? They're all the same, and I said, well, you didn't, you didn't notice the houses before, and now you know how many historic buildings we have. So, if nothing else, that has been accomplished.
Very good. Councilmember CEO, any Commission Committee or Task Force reports?
On, Your Honor.
Councilmember Camaro Sulaq, any Committee, Commission, or Task Force reports?
Yes, the, the youth council met a couple of weeks ago and did a check-in, talked about some ideas and planning for the, the future, and will continue to meet over the, over the summer to team-build and come up with ideas. And I was, I was happy to see a few of the members at the peaceful protest last, last weekend. So, we have some really good youths that are active in the community, and that is all. Thank you.
Very good. Transitioning, do you have a Commission Committee report, Mr. Girba?
Not a committee, but an update on, I just want, we had talked earlier about the administrative order consent.
Yep. Let's transition right now then to reports and other announcements, and the floor is yours.
Just wanted to update that the administrative order consent, we're still negotiating with the state of Michigan and Eagle, and it looks like we're progressing. It's going to take a little more time, but I think we're going to be able to hopefully come back with a solution fairly soon.
Very good. Other reports or announcements from the dais? Reports and announcements, transitioning to those on Zoom. Councilwoman Mitchell?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to request a discussion item at the July 18th meeting, just about setting our agenda. I think you mentioned once or twice that we have a full agenda, and council as a body made a decision not to have a presentation at the same time, the same agenda item as a closed session. And there, it has been wishy-washy, and I'd like to just check in with people. If we're going to have a policy, let's have a policy. If, you know, if there are going to be exceptions, then let's lay out what reasonable exceptions there might be. But that's what I'm requesting is a discussion item, is our meetings and meeting how full our agenda is. Thank you.
Councilmember CEO, any reports or announcements?
No, sir.
Councilmember Camaro Sulaq?
Just one quick question. I'm, I'm not sure if I heard Mr. Girba as, as far as how things that they're progressing, and I didn't catch what the end of it was.
That we're hoping for a solution coming back. We're continuing to negotiate with the state at this point.
Okay. So, do you, any idea if it will be the end of the summer, or?
I'd have to refer more to our, our attorneys, but I think we're going back and forth and trying to clarify things, but hopefully something by the end of the summer, if not late fall. Early, I mean, early fall.
All right. Thank you for clarifying that. That's all I have.
Transitioning to Acting City Manager Green. Mike, I, I know you indicated a few moments ago that Mr. Wygowski had to leave. Do you have any update on the wastewater treatment plan?
Outside of his memo, no. If you guys do have any specific questions, I would just suggest shooting me and Steve an email whenever you're done, and we'll try to get you guys any additional answers.
Very good. Noted for the record. If there's nothing further to be brought up under the discussion portion of tonight's agenda, we come to the second public comment period, and again, for the public's benefit, this public comment period, you are free to address any issues you, you care to address. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time, make comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Are there any citizen comments in council chambers this evening? The record will, will reflect there are none. Clerk Royal, were there any written comments provided either in advance of tonight's meeting on general issues or during the course of tonight's meeting?
No, sir, there have not been any comments.
Okay. We'll give folks just a few minutes. If you'd care to type in a question or comment, we'll give you about 30 seconds, and again, just click on the bottom of the screen. There is a chat icon. You can type in your comment or question, submit it, it'll be, or saved, excuse me, for posterity stake as part of the record, and we'll also make sure that the clerk reads it aloud for council's benefit as well as the public's. So, again, just a few more seconds to type in questions or comments if you have them.
Mayor, while we're waiting, I would like to remind people who have pulled petitions, that petitions for city council or mayor are due by 4:00 PM on July 16th.
Okay, very good. And just so that folks are aware, Clerk Royal, if, if somebody was interested in running for those office, any, either of those offices, they could contact your office to retrieve petitions and the appropriate forms, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, again, I would ask the city clerk, were there any additional comments or questions submitted this evening?
No, sir.
Okay. Then the record will reflect there are no public comments during the second public comment period. Is there any other business to come before Celine City Council this evening? Mayor Protem Girba?
Real quick, two things. One, when will public be able to, I had a question from someone, when will the public be able to attend our, our sessions? I mean, right now, they can come in.
They could, they could have technically come this evening. We're going to play it by ear. The, so the governor, Governor Whitmer extended her initial executive order, which permitted municipalities and units of government to meet remotely until the 15th. So, I expect that she'll make another announcement next week. If that is lifted, then we will resume in-person meetings likely on the 15th. If that's extended, we'll probably continue the hybrid approach. People are free to come to our meetings if they wear a mask and engage in social distancing, but we would still encourage them to, to watch us online and to submit comments via Zoom.
Okay, excellent. And the second one is, because it's all over social media, happy birthday, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, thank you, yeah. I, I love you all, and I am deeply passionate about the city and its future, but I can think of some other ways I would have normally spent a birthday evening, not at a council meeting, but thank you for the, the good wishes. Please note, we do have upcoming meetings on the 20th and a work meeting at 6:00 to discuss the sage compensation study. We'll confirm this after our transition team meeting on Wednesday, but I think we're likely to have a work meeting at 6:00 PM on August 3rd to receive an analysis from our Parks and Rec Department, reference the Rec Center, so as a follow-up to the visioning sessions and the community survey that were conducted or, and/or distributed last year and in the, the first quarter of 2020. At this time, we come now to a closed session, and I would ask for a little bit of insight from the city clerk and from the attorneys. Is it your suggestion that we just stay in this room and ask any members of the public to leave, and obviously, we can't have members of the public continue to participate or view our meeting via Zoom? Maybe the attorney or Mike Green can answer that.
Yeah, I believe that was our original intent, is we would request the public to leave. If they do not leave, we will just remove them from this Zoom call. We'll shut down the Facebook feed and resume all of that once we're done with the session.
Okay, and then my second question is, was it, were we reconvening into regular session at the end of tonight? That was not my understanding.
You have to.
Oh, we have to, okay. All right. Very good. All right, well, at this time, then, the chair would entertain a motion to go into closed session, discuss an opinion by the city attorney dated July 1 regarding E&amp;L Construction Group contract.
Moved.
Moved by CEO to convene into closed session. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dylan. The clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember CEO?
Yes.
Councilmember Dylan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Girba?
Yes.
Councilmember Camaro Sulaq?